Good evening. It being 7:02 on Tuesday, April 24th. I'd like a motion to call me to order a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any walk-ins this evening? There being none?
Over there? No.
There being none, we'll move to the report of the town administrator.
Couple things real quick. First of all, it's a reminder, Shipshape Day is this Saturday, eight to one at the Town Hall. Very good event, hopefully shows up. This week, Kevin, Chief Murphy, and Nancy Darfey and I went to a symposium held by the National Institute for Coastal and Harbor Infrastructure. They talked about the economics of coastal infrastructure. Interesting, but yet mind-numbingly boring at the same time, talking about bonding and it was... But, good meeting and talking about some of the challenges and just the magnitude of what Massachusetts is facing and where that money's going to come from. And I think one of the things that Kevin and I both took out of it is now that Boston's involved in coastal resiliency, a lot of that money's going to dry up and go someplace else. Boston's going to try to get a lot of that money, so it's going to become more and more competitive and harder and harder for us to get some of these grants because the competition's going to go away.
Mm-hmm.
The senior center of the Public Building Committee met last week. They reviewed the architectural submissions. They've narrowed it down to three at this point. They will be bringing those back, doing background checks, interviewing, and trying to pick a final architect for the senior project, get that going, so we're on track with that. Just to update people, we met with representatives of the dog park today. We opened the bids for the dog park last week. We are short of the necessary funds to issue the award. Substantially short, actually. We're going to make a couple of calls, see if there's any additional funding available to the standard grant and some of these other sources. If not, those bids will have to be rejected, and then we'll sit down with the architect and try to do some value engineering, or we're going to have to find some more money. We're about $100,000 short, Kevin? About $100,000 short. We received six bids. The three lowest bids were right in the ballpark of each other, so that tells us it was a pretty good bid, to see that, but not anywhere near what we had for funding. So, right now, I'd say we're probably going to be rejecting those bids and have to either get some more money from the town or something, so do that project. But we'll work on that over the summer. The other thing I want to update people on is if you're driving around town, you're seeing the paving trucks pretty much everywhere. The schedule is posted on our website and posted on our Facebook page. We've done Countryway, we've done Mordecai Lincoln Road, Old Gannett Road, Man Hill, Tilden, Captain Pass, those are all done today. We've already started the grinding on some of the other roads, down on First Avenue, Second Avenue. This is just what we're doing for the water, so we will have some other paving. Kevin and Sean in the department are pricing out some other work for our Chapter 90 money and our other town money. I think the big project for that, Kevin, is going to be Jericho, right?
Jericho and Adley Road.
Oh, they're down there, but...
And Adley will also do the sidewalk, too.
They're going great guns, and people should be glad to see them. I've been driving on them. I will caution people when we repave those roads. I will ask Chief Stewart to have his department keep an eye on those roads, because once we pave someone's road, the very next complaint we get is people are going too fast on them. So, make sure you're slowing down on those, because we will ask to do some enforcement on those.
1:23?
1:23 is scheduled towards the end, but yeah, that'll be ground out and that'll be repaved. Scheduled right now for the last week in April, I think, right, Kev? Which is next week.
One of the things we're working out with them is we want to grind it on a Monday and Tuesday, so then hopefully we can pave Wednesday and Thursday, and then have a rain day on Friday, because we don't want to leave it open for the weekend.
Okay, good.
So, they'll be looking at the weather, and we might jockey things around if it looks like we get some really good weather.
Would you do me one favor? Would you just let the two garden centers or three garden centers know?
The message boards will go up in advance, and we'll let them know.
This is their window here, you know, so, if you could...
Yep.
So, just that one stretch from the Rotary to Neilgate, about?
Yep.
And the road will be open, Sean. And we won't close the hole. There'll be at least one lane getting by, so...
Okay.
But, people should be glad of that. So, that's all I have for tonight, but the paving's going very well and they're moving quickly. Looks like we're going to lose tomorrow now. It's supposed to be a rainy day, but you'll be able to see where they're going, because they're grinding it, and then we're coming up with the pavers a couple days later. So, that's all I got for this week.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just a question on the senior center, that committee. So, we talked about, so they're trying to find the architect, but the plans have not been drawn up yet, right? Because we were talking about trying to set a limit in terms of the maximum cost that we would go up to on that and have discussion on that?
That'll be a discussion with the architect when you design the building. Look, this is what we want to spend on the entire project, so try to get it to commit on that, but that's after you select who the architect is going to be.
Okay, great.
Okay. Can we get a list of who the finalists are?
Sure.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
Be curious to see that. Any other questions for Jim?
Nope.
No, Kevin? Okay. All right, we have a public hearing at 7:10, and it's just about that time. So, I know Kathy, you asked to come out of order, but I'll take you after the public hearings, because we need to meet that, if that's okay with you. Okay?
They're not here.
They're not here? Nobody's here?
Who's out of the hallway here?
All right.
Is that Nancy Darfey?
It's Nancy. Do you... Nancy and John? Oh, it's Nancy, okay. All right, well then, Kathy, come on up. We'll take the election poll hours out of order under new business. We'll bring Kathy up to determine the election hours for 19.
All right. So, we have an uncontested ballot. That's not to say somebody could do a write-in, but nobody's declared that they're doing a writing with me. Not that they have to do that either, it's usually a courtesy, but... So, we have... Everybody's unimposed. Everybody. So, I'm asking that we shorten up the poll hours a little bit. I was going to say, too, I have to legally be open five hours. So, if we can open the polls at eight... And by the way, the absentee ballots will be here, I think they said Thursday. So, we have all that time to get absentees if anybody's interested and can't make it to the polls. So, I'm asking that the polls be open from eight to two, so that's six hours. If you want to go eight to three, that's fine, too, that's reasonable. It's up to you.
Come.
I think it's fine. There's no one's running, and it's...
You know, I hate to say that. I mean, I still want people to get out and vote. I think, you know, keeping your voting record, you know, is good, you know?
How far in advance can you absentee ballot? When do those become?
They're coming in Thursday. That's what... Well, UPS said Thursday, so...
When can you actually start?
Anytime, as soon as I have the ballot, sure. And I'll put it, I usually put it right on the website as soon as I have the ballots ready to go. And they go out to the nursing homes and people that have requested all the mail-in ballots, so...
Kathy, what's been done in the past when there's been an uncontested ballot like that, as far as polling hours, historically?
Shorter. I don't remember off the top of my head, I shouldn't look. You know, I went back a few years. We haven't had an uncontested ballot for a while.
A long time, yeah. Yeah. I think we had, I went, I think we went three.
I think we went three one time when I were, I think I was working with Bernice, maybe. I don't really remember.
I can't give you a great reason why, but for some reason, three o'clock just sounds better to me.
Three o'clock sounds good to me, too.
Different shifts that people may have, a lot of shifts in at two.
Yeah.
I don't know. Eight to two sounds short to me, but I certainly understand your reasoning to shorten it up.
Three o'clock works, too. Either one.
I'm fine with either. It's, I mean, there's not a single contested race, so, and there's not any talk about any...
I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah. So, I would say, do you think eight to three is...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Karen, did you have any...
No, that, my question about the absentee ballots is if somebody is working a shift and they can't get home, then they can absentee ballot, you know, two weeks ahead of time, right?
Well, more than that, it'll be almost a month.
Yeah, so I, so I'm fine with short hours on the day of, because people have ample time, they come in and vote.
Yeah. I'll put it on Situate Facebook, the website. Posted in Town Hall, they're available, all that. Do a e-subscriber thing, so...
Great. Make sure all of those Situate High School kids who just registered come out and vote.
They've got to get out and vote, yes, yes.
Motion?
All right, so we'll take a motion. You guys good?
Yep.
Motion to set the poll hours for the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May 19th, at 2018, at Situate High School gym located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Way, from 2:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
Eight a.m.
Eight a.m.
Let me say that over. From 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll recuse myself from that, Lorraine.
Okay.
So, it's...
Actually, John should have...
Three to one.
Three to zero.
Three to zero. Yes, sorry.
Three to zero, one...
Yeah.
Actually, two.
Right?
Yeah, John shouldn't have been in here.
Okay. Kathy?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just for a note, Mr. Danahue is here, however, he's just recusing himself from the first public hearings, so he will join us following that. All right.
Is anyone here for...
We have Caitlin Tomador here. She's here for the Concha Restaurant Group, doing business as Hook and Harvest.
Harry should be coming as well.
Okay.
Okay, we can take a lot of order.
Do you want to wait for her?
We can wait. I just texted her, I haven't heard back yet, so, I don't know.
Do you both need to be here, or you have different ones that you're representing? Because I know there's a few of them.
She's transferred. You can do Caitlin for the...
The Concha? The 7:30?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so you do that.
It's not 7:30, though.
Yeah, it's not 7:30, and it's a public hearing.
Let's wait for...
So, we need to wait.
Okay.
Just in case.
If she's not here by 7:30, we can do you that.
Okay, no worries.
And Robin King isn't here either for...
Oh, dear. Well, it's only 7:15.
And the discussion vote for First Herringbrook Reservoir Dam has been postponed.
7:55?
For 7:55.
Move to adjourn?
So...
Let's get an update from Kevin.
Yeah, spring Kevin in.
Okay.
He's on.
So, was he just here?
Yeah, he was just here. We are moving right along here.
I'll read the proclamation, come on.
All right.
Bless you.
Bless you, Ruth.
Do you need Sean for this, Kevin?
He's on his way. Said he'd be here by 7:30. I can start and give you an update where we are, and if you want to wait for Sean, that's...
We could do the remote participation policy, if you want him here.
Yeah, he was driving all the way up to come here, I don't want...
All right, why don't you wait for him?
So...
I can get Sean.
Yeah.
Let me call him and find out where he is. He's probably just pulling up, because he said he'd be here by 7:30.
Karen, you want to do the sports report?
I would love to. Who's he for?
Tony's job replaced.
Oh, Danahue. Welcome. All right.
We're skipping around.
We're skipping around here, so, because we've got some folks that we're waiting for, if anybody's trying to follow us. So, we're going to move down to the remote participation policy discussion, posted for 8:25. So, if you want to go down in your agendas as well, there's obviously the backup and whatnot. So, Jim, or Lorraine, did one of you want to start with this, or...
It's a Philly stock policy. The Attorney General's Office indicates those elements that need to be in a remote participation policy. The board has to adopt it. I'm just trying to find it, so I can touch on some of the highlights.
Sure.
1:27.
There you go.
It's way down. What is it, 1:20?
28, 1:27.
1:27, go ahead.
It's not a policy for people to use just because they're going to miss a meeting. It's someone to use when they, if there's a very important meeting that you'd be there, so it should be infrequently. People should still be attending the meetings. That's in the policy. You must notify the chair in writing 48 hours prior that you'll be participating. Everybody must be able to hear and listen to it. This is an audio, not a video. You have to announce the presence of the person participating, and there has to be a quorum of the board present in order for someone to participate remotely. Those are really the big ones.
Not including that person.
Not including that person, right. The quorum must be present, and you cannot participate in executive session by remote participation under this policy.
Oh, I don't think that's what it says.
My only comment was you should exclude...
I'm sorry, you have to make sure that you tell, you have to disclose, there's no one else that can hear your conversation, you're right, Kev, I'm sorry.
If you're doing that kind of a vote.
You're doing executive session, right, so...
The only really different thing is that every vote has to be a roll called vote, so that the person will be on the radio to hear how everyone votes.
Okay, right. The, and thank you for pulling this together, because I think this is something that our committees have been asking for a lot in the last couple of years, just with people's work schedules, they're remote, they want to still participate, sometimes they can't avoid traveling for business. The only thing that I thought that we should consider tightening up when I looked through this was the first guideline where it says remote participation should be infrequent. I don't know if, I mean, some other towns will put three times in a fiscal year or whatever. I think we should put a number on it, only because I think infrequent leaves it really nebulous for people to say, "Oh, I don't have to be there six times," or, you know...
I mean, I didn't want to put a number on it. I think we've had three in some of those we saw, a couple fives, but, you know, I wasn't comfortable putting a number on it. But if the board wishes to limit it, that's entirely up to you.
Sorry.
Can the chair say yes or no?
Exactly. At the discretion of the chair.
Right.
I believe the chair can make a determination, yeah.
They can.
Yeah.
So, infrequently at the discretion of the chair or something?
For each committee?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
So...
You have to meet the, you have to meet the requirements of why you're doing it.
Right.
So, if the chair doesn't feel you're meeting those requirements, then she can deny, he or she, sorry, can deny public participation, you know? Sitting at home, not coming in, well, that's not a reason to remote participate, sorry.
Right.
But if you meet the requirements, then you kind of have to...
I don't know, any other thoughts on that limitation piece or infrequent? I just...
I like, I like your idea. I think it should probably be less than three. I think it's very difficult to run a meeting with someone, I mean, we're assuming it's just one remote person. If you have two or three remote people coming in, it's very difficult to communicate, to hear, and to progress in a meeting.
That's a good point.
So, I think it's, I think it should be at the discretion of the chair, and I think it does say in here, if it's, if there's technical difficulties, then you can disconnect the person and continue moving on with the, with the meeting. But I think you have to, to think about a scenario where you have more than one remote person, and how functional the meeting's going to be. And you don't want, as somebody alluded to it, you don't want people relying on not having to come to the meetings. It's much more productive, I think, in person.
Yeah.
So, I'd be in favor of putting a limit per person, how many times you can do it in a, in the course of a calendar year or a term.
Jim, why wouldn't you want to put a number on it, again?
I just wasn't comfortable doing it. I mean, I think that's more up to you guys to decide. Again, I've done three, we've done five, and we've done infrequent, so it's more of your preference.
Just thinking of someone who's sick and not able to, you know...
You could run into somebody, yeah, sick and like...
To the chair to say, "Okay, yeah, this is, you know, we are over the number that we chose, but, you know..."
You can't participate anymore, if you have a hard and fast number, right?
Then you're just absent.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, you could also say, "No more than two times and last approved by the board" or something, so that the whole board could decide if there's an extenuating.
You know, we, I just want to have something. We do have some situations like the Christian disabilities, where if somebody is disabled or something, it could be more than two occasions.
Right. But they're, but they're allowed to under the law regardless of whether we adopt this.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
Right, yeah. John?
I guess the thought I had is, I don't mind the discretion. There have been occasions where people have been ill, ill due to, you know, a disease of sorts, so then, so I hate to actually put a number on it. I agree with Jim in that regard. I guess the other question would be, you know, giving the discretion to the chair, hopefully that would be used properly. You know, I guess the only other thing is, like, some of these committees meet once a month, 12 times a year. Maybe you say, you know, no more than half. In other words, I guess the question is that they meet half the meetings, you know, up to, I mean, I'm thinking like, you cannot miss more than up to half the meetings in any calendar year is a possibility. Or we do this, say discretion of the chair, see how it goes. It's a policy, you can always amend it. I hate to put a number on it, because there have been occasions where people have been ill, with cancer and things, and I'm like, I don't want to give them off.
I think if you put a number on it, you have to have some way to get out of that.
Yeah.
So, either...
I relief that.
The board would have to approve, or the chairman of the board may approve absences in excess of a number certain.
Yeah. I say that because I know some people were going through chemo treatment, they're like, "Chase, I should quit." And I'm like, "No, hang on, because you know what? They, they wanted to come back," and that was the problem.
And half would be, if you, if you said half, a board like the Board of Slackmen, the Finance Committee, you know, I mean, that's 10, 15 meetings easy that you're missing that.
Right.
Yeah, I don't like half. Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the problem with that. Probably at the discretion of the, you know...
I'm more inclined to start off a little tighter and loosen it up. I don't know, I think it's more...
Of course, then you get into logistics. Can you imagine if you get a committee with, like, one of our committees that have a lot, and they're all calling in, and you're not going to be able to get somebody on the phone? I mean, you're not going to be able to have that discussion.
Can we change it?
Yeah.
Like you just alluded to, let's do something that we can always change.
Yeah, we can always modify it, that's what John had said, yeah.
Is there that much demand for this?
I think there's, well, I've heard it from two or three of the boards that I, I know Coastal has requested it, Advisory has requested it. Those are the two that I know of. I don't know if any of you have ever had any...
I know Commission on Disabilities has looked for it, yeah.
Well, let's give it a shot. Let's...
Stop being conservative, maybe you'll...
The only other point that I wanted to discuss as well is that it's a 48-hour in advance notification, and then that committee has to figure out how to provide that remote access. I think that's a short time window, to have a chair of a particular committee have to figure out how to provide, I mean, we, people meet all over town, and the, the access to conference call phones and that just isn't as easily available, so I just, I can just see, "All right, I gave you 48-hour notice, now how are we going to make that work?" Can't we use a cellphone?
Well, I mean, I think the first, the call goes, the chairman says, "I'm not going to be at the meeting on Tuesday." They're going to call down to our office and say, "We're meeting at the EOC. We have a person who wants to remote participate. We have to get that set up."
All right, then we definitely get that process.
If you can't, they can't remote participate. Most of those, most of the places we meet at have a phone that we could set something up.
Right.
But the 40 hours, that's part of the reason of the 48 hours, to give our staff, the technical staff, or whoever, the ability to get out there and say, "Okay, yeah, I can get a phone set up, I can get a remote."
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think it's short. I think 72 hours gives you more time. But if you guys think 48 hours is enough, that's, I'll defer to you guys, but...
I think practically speaking, if you're not going to make a meeting, it's, you're going to, it's a short window. Like, you got called out of work for business, you know, had to leave town for work. That's true, too. And you may not know that in advance.
An emergency.
An emergency, someone's sick, and you're leaving town, or whatever.
I think, I think it should be in there if possible. You know, if someone's meeting at the Little Red Schoolhouse, I don't think the town should have to jump through hoops to try and figure out how to get a phone line over there. You know, if it, if, if it's easily achievable, then we should do it. And then you can always just do it on a cellphone, and we have the clause in here that says if, if there's, how is it stated, "Technical difficulties," then you can just say it's not working.
Well, then further down says that any costs associated with remote participation shall be the responsibility of the remote participant. If we can't do it, we can't do it. It's just, you know, we can't accommodate you, meeting at the Little Red Schoolhouse, you're meeting, you know, someplace, it's just, we can't do it.
Yeah, I mean, you, you bring up a good point. This is an accommodation that we're willing to make to keep participation going, so it doesn't necessarily have to be...
So, and we don't want the IT department spending...
No. No, exactly.
Six hours trying to figure out how to get...
Is it permissible to use a personal cellphone on speaker?
As long as everybody has to be able to hear.
As long as it's...
Right.
Has to be audible to everybody in the room.
Okay.
So, I would recommend some language like that, if easily achievable, or whatever the legalese is in there. And I would put in at the discretion, a limited period, or I'd even put a hard number in there, but say that it could be extended by the, by the board chair.
What could be extended?
The period, the, the number of times that somebody could miss a meeting. So, we could say five or three or whatever, and say...
Right. No more than X times. I don't care what the number is.
Maybe just put something, "The chair will endeavor to ensure that remote participation is used sparingly." I know that sounds really...
Maybe just put something, "The chair will endeavor to ensure that remote participation is used sparingly." I know that sounds really...
It sounds really...
That's the same as infrequent.
But on the other hand, the bottom line is you're basically saying, you're trying to say, "Keep it as minimum as possible."
Yeah. Well, that's the same as infrequent, yeah.
That'll hold up in court.
No, it'll be fine.
I reviewed about 20 different town policies.
Yeah. How many of them had limitations?
Most had.
Just infrequent?
This line.
No, no limitation on the day?
Yep.
All right.
Keep infrequent.
Well, if, if folks are fine with the way this is, it's flexible enough, and if we run into problems, we can tighten it up.
Yeah, it's, it's a policy, so if we have a problem, we just have a meeting and we change the policy.
Right.
Right.
So are we not going to add in there, "If it's easily achievable"?
Where do you want to add? For the remote access.
Yeah.
I think you should...
And again, I don't want someone to call Town Hall 48 hours before and say, you know, "We're having a meeting at Lawson Tower."
We had one last week, an hour before the meeting.
Yeah, well, that's why you have the 48-hour in advance, right?
I mean, it might be a better idea, maybe to say, "The locations, we can do it." The EOC, the meeting must take place in the live room, EOC, or the slot in the hearing room.
Are you going to have people shuffling around, you know?
I think Tony's right about if, if readily available, or if some...
Or add a location that are, has phone service, or something like that.
Again, you can, you can use a cellphone, as long as everybody can hear. So most places, we can do it.
Right.
If you don't have, if the technical, technical difficulties arise, you're done.
You're done.
Right.
Add a location with remote participation availability.
There you go. I have one other thing on here that I, I, I'm back to the executive session. I'm not sure that remote participation should be allowed for executive session, because by definition, they're, they're usually precise conversations, or sensitive conversations. Even though you're not supposed to have anyone in the room or anything, I'm a little uncomfortable with allowing remote for that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's up to you, yes.
Yeah. Anyone else feel, I mean...
I do, but what if you're traveling, and you're in your hotel room, and you're...
And it's an important meeting, I know.
I guess the other thing I would say is, if you were all here tonight, we had an executive session, you could go home and tell someone what you talked about. I mean, it's, it's up to you, as people participating, to observe the sanctity of the executive session, whether you're on the phone, whether you're in the meeting.
I agree. I, I think, my feeling on it is, I'm like, if they're going to breach it, they're going to breach it whether they're here, or whether they're at home. And you have to have the trust factor of your, your board members.
I think it's more of a nuance. It's much easier to have a sensitive conversation live. To your point, it's some, there's a lot lost in translation when it's remote.
It, it is. I, I just say, speaking with clients and certain issues, I mean, there's that whole, you know, discussion. Sometimes it has to happen, sometimes you have it face-to-face. If there was a situation, an executive, that you needed to have participation, it, let's put it to you this way, it's not going to happen too often.
Right.
Chances are, where it's going to happen, it's going to happen to this board.
Well, how often do our committees go into executive session?
Maybe planning, maybe zoning. It's rare that these other ones, I'm not sure Board of Health gets into executive, unless they're in lawsuit. Generally, they don't. So really talking about this, pretty much this board.
CPC.
CPC, that's another one.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to raise it.
If it turns in that somebody's violating the sanctity, then I'd say, "Okay."
Okay.
Then you can rein it back, maybe. Just an ease of convenience, that's all at this point.
That's fine.
So can I make the suggestion that Lorraine try and add a few of those things that we want to add in there, and we...
Write the final copy.
Next week?
Yeah.
Good.
That makes sense.
Next meeting, yeah.
It can be an effect for the new season.
So we don't want to go with a hard number? Is that our conclusion?
No, we're staying with infrequent.
Okay.
So why don't we, the third bullet point, the press and chair in the meeting may permit remote participation, blah, 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 blah. Always difficult, physically attend the meeting, then put somewhere in that bullet that, you know, the space has to be suitable for remote participation, or something like that, available for remote participation. We'll come up with something.
That, that sounds good. Yeah.
The meeting space?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Conducive.
Yeah, that's a good way.
I'll acquiesce my infrequent, and we'll see how it goes.
He wants to make that change and bring it back, or he just wants to trust us to make the change?
Why don't we just move it there? I'll make a motion. Move to approve and implement the remote participation policy 62-18 in the town of Situate, effective May 1st, 2018, with the...
Subject to...
Subject to the addition of a suitable location to item number three.
Second.
Subjected by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Dennehy. Any further discussion?
No.
Saying none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five-zero.
Good.
And after the update, we'll email it to all of board and committee chairs.
Okay. And let them know about that, you know, notification period, that somebody may need to work with them, if somebody needs help with...
Thank you, whoever did. Was this Lorraine and Jim? Good. I'm glad this got done.
All right. So we'll move back to our scheduled items at 7:10, which is, we're going back to the public hearing, John, because we do not conduct those?
Yeah. I'm going to recuse myself on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the first one, Cara, is Cara here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hi, how are you?
Are they on the same, yeah.
I don't know that they're all the same.
Yeah, they're on the same, well.
So, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
So some changes going on with the ownership between, between the family?
Little restructuring, yeah.
Yeah? Okay. Want to just, just give us sort of a, a highlight? We have all the information here, so everything seems to be in order.
Yeah, we're just kind of focusing on different things right now. I'm going to be focusing on Riva and River Shed, and Caitlin is going to be focusing in Mike on Hook and Harvest. So we're just kind of like moving some things around.
Okay.
And you're asking us just to change the liquor license?
Yep. Everything else should be status quo, I believe.
Managers are the same in all of them? Or is that part of the, that's not...
It, it, it's all in the application. Lorraine would probably be...
Okay, so that's part of the application, right?
The managers changing is the transfer of license for Hook and Harvest. Restaurant group, and there's a separate function on that.
Right.
And so I'll be transferring that to Caitlin, and everything else is, I think, pretty much status quo.
Okay.
Right.
Karen, did you have any questions?
No, it was all in order, and it seems just same old, same people, just different boxes.
We'll switcheroo. Sean?
Nope.
No questions?
No. It's a technical term, Sean. Switcheroo.
Okay. So we have three different motions here, that we need to take separately?
Yeah.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
So move the Board of Selectmen approve a liquor license change of beneficial interest to Cara, is it Billado?
Whatever you want to say.
I, I get mine butchered as well. Ton Dorf for J K M Square?
Perfect.
S Q LLC?
You're doing good, Tony.
DBA, I'm not reading the next one. Riva, 114 to 116 Front Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Four-zero, Elaine, I mean, Elaine, Lorraine, sorry. All right, so the next one is motion with regards to River Shed.
Motion.
Let's hear four questions.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a liquor license change of beneficial interest to Cara Billado Ton Dorf for grateful having to a business as the River Shed, 17 New Driftway.
Motion by Mr. Harris?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the last one is the actual change.
There's two more.
Last one on that page.
Oh, on that page, sorry.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a transfer of a liquor license, change of manager, management operating agreement, new officer-director to Caitlin Ton Dorf for Kanash Restaurant Group, DBA, Hook and Harvest. The 6,000, did I say that wrong?
Yeah, really wrong. I was praying you were going to perfect it.
I didn't want to do this one!
Monix 101.
Oh my God, it's my eyesight.
Like I would...
I'm going to go kancho.
There you go.
Is that better?
Little kancho.
I added a couple of letters. Kancho.
So close.
The 6,318 square foot is located at 227 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, and consists of 4,930 square feet of space on the first floor, with five rooms and two bathrooms, 833 square feet on the second floor, with three rooms and one bathroom, and 555 square feet, square foot basement with two rooms and parking areas in the front and sides of the building.
Second.
Oh my gosh.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four-zero.
Karen would like to know what the meaning behind the name is.
Kancho?
Kancho, yeah.
It means grateful in Japanese.
Oh, grateful haven, I love things.
And Haven is an island we have summered on our whole life in Maine, so we kind of combined the two, so.
Oh, nice.
Kind of have like, pull some meaning out of something, right?
Kanash means grateful in Hindu.
We have one more motion.
I got confused.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a transfer of the common vic... I can never say that.
Victor.
And entertainment license for Kancho Restaurant Group, doing businesses Hook and Harvest, 121 First Parish Road, Situate, Mass. The new owner, Caitlin Ton Dorf, to include all terms of the common...
Vicular.
...car dealer and entertainment permit. Shouldn't write that one.
Second.
Move by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Four-zero. That's it, right, Lorraine? That's everything?
That's it. I combined a common, I can entertain.
And entertainment together for those. Okay, great. All right, so it sounds like...
Sorry, we exhausted your phonetics for the evening.
I know. A little bit of a lesson this evening. We are not playing back that tape. Just keep coming back and challenging us, that's all.
The next one will really be good.
Well, you guys do a great job with all your establishments, so keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a discussion vote for a new Hawker Peddler license for the application of Lola Jane LLC. Robin King, is Robin here?
Yep.
Hi, Robin, come on in.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Robin.
How are you?
Excellent, thank you. Yourself?
Great. So you want to tell us a little bit about, it sounds like a great idea?
Sure.
Tell everybody what you're planning on doing?
So in November, I purchased a food trailer, and in the short amount of time between the past few months, it was really, the initial idea was an extension of the restaurant, Oro. Private parties, in-house catering, stuff of that nature. But, truth be told, I really love cooking in it. So, and I just was thinking that it would be a really nice addition to Situate, especially in the summertime, to perhaps have something like that available in the parking lot of Peggety Beach. Very, very straightforward. You know, we'd be receiving all the goods at Oro, prepping everything onsite there, transferring it to the trailer, and doing business basically right there in Peggety Beach parking lot, for the summer months, for the summer season, I should say.
What type of foods are you thinking?
I'm going to keep it simple. Beach food, you know, stuff where, for, for a scenario you come up, you could get something to go, you could get a sandwich or something like that to bring right up to the beach. Chips, salsa, guacamole, burritos, tacos, beach food, beach food, you know. And obviously, everything we would package right there. We would bring our own waste, you know, we would bring our own waste receptacles and stuff like that. We could bring it with us, so that wasn't an issue at all. Keep it clean. No straws or anything like that, so it's not, wouldn't be an impact on the environment or the beach or anything like that.
That's good.
Just very straightforward, just a nice addition to what is already a beautiful setting, anyway. But, you know, just sometimes if you're sitting there and you want to grab a bite to eat, not run down somewhere else, just...
That's a great idea.
Something to add to, you know, a nice Situate summer.
Where are you prepping the food? In, at Oro?
Yes.
And then just assembling it in the food truck, or will it actually be...
Bit of both, bit of both. There will be some stuff that will be completely, so to give you an example, if you want to come up and get a bottle of water and a chicken Caesar salad wrap, you can do that in and out. If you want to get something prepared right there, you can do that as well, like a taco or something of that nature. I'm not keeping the menu too loose, but it'll be food that is, you know, eat it on the beach, enjoy the sunset.
How big is the vehicle?
It's about 10 by 12.
So is it like an ice cream truck?
Uh, yeah, same idea, same idea. Wouldn't be any ice cream, I'm not doing desserts or anything like that.
No, no, but that's the size?
Yeah.
Where are you going to park it?
Um, wherever you let me.
Okay.
So...
No, are you just planning on grabbing a spot at...
Well, what I would like to do, the best-case scenario would be to have it close enough where it's not a hike for people to go to. Something close where you could just sort of go over that knoll that brings you down into where like the, the shower area is, or something like that, and perhaps off to the right.
So, so there's not, there's the handicap spots there? If I'm, if you're going up the, the path, there's the handicap spots?
Correct.
And then I don't think, then there's the dune, right? There's no parking over there? There's just parking behind you?
Yeah, I mean, I would obviously stay away from, obviously, the handicaps and, and the handicap spaces, and any large flow of traffic. My idea would be to be sort of set off, because, you know, I would like to have a, hopefully, a line of people coming in.
So you're not going to go on a parking spot? You just want to park in the...
Scenario would be, I would pull up, and like I said, it's a 10 by 12 trailer, so it wouldn't even be, I could detach it from my truck and just leave.
Oh, it's a trailer.
It's a trailer. It's not even a food truck, it's a trailer.
So you can't move it?
I can move it anywhere we want.
You'd have to bring your truck on, hook it back up, and move it.
And you're going to do that every day? Bring the truck in and out, or just leave it for the season?
Uh, if I could leave it there, that would be great. But if you want me to bring it every day, I can do that as well.
I think you'd have a problem, the town have a problem. That, that, I don't see that going over very good, Robin. If I were, I'm putting myself in your shoes, you know?
You don't want to leave it overnight.
Yeah, I wouldn't leave it overnight, I don't think...
Well, it, then, I mean, to give you an example, if we were doing, perhaps like a busy weekend or something like that, I could leave it, but, once again, I only live about 10 minutes down the road, so I could go in the morning, detach the trailer, leave it there, do our business, and at the end of the business day, would come, pick it up, and would leave with me.
What days and hours are you thinking?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I...
Eleven till eight.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be, because obviously, I still have to be at Oro as well.
Yeah.
So I'm sort of be running from one, going to the other. I believe I indicated the hours of operation on the initial paperwork, but...
You do, you have 11, you have 11 to 8 p.m. for seven days a week.
Is that what you intend, to have it there every day?
I'd like to, you know, I would really like to. If it turns out to be five, so be it, but I mean, I would really like to, as you know, I mean, we have a real short window in the summer months here, so it's best to...
The, one of the issues is, there's other people that do vending as well.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, want access to those areas also. I know there's, the ice cream trucks come to Peggety Beach, and there's a lemonade, there's a lemonade, Dells.
They used to be, right.
Yeah. So there's other people that, that come in as well, and it's always been, what's the 15 minute, what's the...
Right. Every 15 minutes, they have to move, don't they, Lorraine? Have you looked at the Hawkers Peddlers?
I have, I have.
And actually, that was one of the reasons that I sort of specifically...
Thank you.
...made it a point not to try and, I'm not trying to do a lemonade car and compete with them, I'm not trying to do an ice cream car and compete with them. I'm doing my own thing that's pretty specific, and as far as I know, not yet done there, so I'm trying not to step on any toes there.
There's four other people that want to go to that parking lot also.
To do what, Tony?
To sell, not sandwiches.
They're transient.
I don't even know what they have on, you know, they're...
There's three. But they go from lot to lot to lot.
Dell's Lemonade.
Right.
No, there's, there's four.
They're trucks, they're not trailers.
Dell's Lemonade, Zack's Ice Cream, Donna's Ice Cream, oh, and you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, you're the fourth.
But those other folks, they travel from beach to beach to beach.
Right.
Robin's just looking for...
Yeah, I don't, I...
You're just going to, you're just asking for Peggety.
Yeah, I'm asking for Peggety, and I'm asking for Peggety, number one, because it's a great beach, and it's a really good family beach, and I think that would be a nice addition. But it's also very close to Oro.
Yeah.
It just works, it just works the whole...
Well, it's one of the more popular beaches, too.
Yeah, and, and it, it, having been there many nights myself, it's, it'd be sort of nice to sort of go over that knoll and maybe get some chips and salsa and watch the sunset, you know, it's a nice night.
John?
So, Robin, I hate to say this, but I'm against it, because it should be in Sand Hills.
Well, then, we're gonna have to do two beaches.
I mean, I don't have to tell you right now, but, uh, but in seriousness, um, so I'm looking at this a little differently, it's a unique opportunity, we had the moving vehicles with the trucks, with the ice cream and Dell's, and, um, I think what we were trying to encourage seven, eight years ago was to try to help people out who were looking for, trying to make some money when the economy was down.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember the hot dog vendor at the lighthouse at, um, the park there, who, I'm not sure if he's doing it this year or not.
He does not review the issue.
I don't think so, um, but, what I like about it is, is, I've had it, I've had your food out, the, the trailer at another location in town, delicious, what's unique about it is, it's something different than what we normally have with vehicles coming and going, the beaches is probably the most, one of the most popular beaches, certainly the most accessible beach.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I think this will be an amenity that's kind of interesting, a lot of people, whether it's in Boston or other towns, have these types of vehicles that come up, sell food, providing meet the requirements of the Board of Health, um, which, I'm, I know you will.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's interesting to try, obviously, you'll be the first, I would anticipate, you won't not, you'll not be the last, there'll be others who are gonna look at it, and then we might have an issue of like, okay, who's first, how many trucks, how many, or, or trailers, and that's gonna come down to the food, who has the best food, um, I think there's also an issue of, maybe we have to take a look into costs, because obviously, you're getting a spot down there, um, for the purpose of the license, of the Hockus Peddlers license, which is nominal based upon your location, um, and that's another issue, but, I guess what I'm, that's something we're gonna have to address if this were to decide it, but I, I think it's an interesting idea, I'd like to see how you do, now, the overnight, I agree with what you guys are saying with respect to moving it, although, my feeling on it is, it's tough, if you're gonna be there from eleven to eight during the day, what's the point moving it every time, but you take the, um, responsibility of, there's damage to it, if something happens.
It's, it, it's fully insured, and, um, you know, I would lock it up at the end of the evening, and, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward, the operation.
It would have to be, I mean, the, the thing that I worry about is the plastic or the garbage, things being all over the place.
Mm-hmm.
Because if that were the case, then I'd be like, it's gonna either be fixed, the garbage can't be blown around, um, I would be, that's one of the concerns I have, but I'm, I'm intrigued, I mean, even if we were to do Thursday to Sunday, I mean, during the weekdays, I mean, maybe Thursday or Friday to Sunday, then you can keep it overnight the rest of the time, just bring it during the day and bring it back, I don't know, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, again, I'm kind of saying, something new, something different, we can test it to see how it is, and if it doesn't work, no offense, next year, we'd say, no, it's not happening.
Well, and I think it's also unique, because it's, it's, it's a, um, it's an extension of a Situate business.
Right.
Um, very close, it keeps it all in-house, keeps it all in town, you know, um, and it's also, whether you live here, or have a summer home here, or just bought a summer home here, um, you're gonna be really happy this summer when you go down and say, huh.
No, I'm not.
You know, and, no, no, and, and I just, that, that was-
Saying, at Sand Hills, I'm not gonna be happy when you're down at Peggy.
Well, well, well.
That's all right, we've got Sand Hills General Store, they do-
I'll just cruise around before I go back to Oro.
Anyway, that's my, my two cents.
Did, yeah, Sean, go ahead.
First of all, you have to give them seven days a week, you can't be doing Thursday to Sunday or anything like that, you have, his window is from Memorial Day to Labor Day, after that, no one goes to the beaches, very few.
I was saying overnight, I wasn't saying every day, I was saying, keep it, if, if you were concerned, that's what I meant, I agree with you, Sean.
Because of weather and all of that, Fourth of July, Third of July, might be in the middle of the week, any way we can help you, I'm just putting myself in your shoes, I, well, you'll find out, if, if you left your trailer there overnight, there was a problem, you spent a lot of money, you'd be taking it out of there right away.
Yes.
That's the only thing, I would ask you to get creative, I don't care if you're in a parking spot, you're on the side of Bobby Fenton's house, or is, you know, something like that, work something out where you can, you know, you, you can get business, you're not taking up a spot, because around enough of them on certain days of the week.
Sure.
Get creative, and-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Don't block people, and obviously, you're not gonna, you know, do that, but, um, he's not gonna be able to move it like our Hockus Peddlers, um-
Right.
-by law says now, that's not feasible, maybe doing well just to disconnect it and leave, that, that would be asking a lot, so it's really get, taking up the spots of two vehicles, trailer and a, and a truck, but, it probably could be done.
Okay.
Especially if you talk to the people down there, and maybe, you know.
Yeah, I mean, minus the path of least resistance, so, I mean, if we detach it and I drive my truck and leave it at Oro and come back, so be it.
Want to make it easy for you, other peoples have, other folks have tried this, there was a, a girl that, you know, sold lobster rolls down in Cole Parkway, and, you know, she worked very hard at it, and it didn't, you know, it's, it's tough, it's a lot like a taxi cab in this town, you know, it's just not quite big enough, you know, we're not Kenny Bunk, or we're not, you know, some of these other large towns, but I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
You know, full, like John, fully behind, you know.
Thank you both, thank you all.
Karen?
Um, yeah, I think people will be very excited, I think John's right, that it's, you know, it, it's something that will be very heralded, so the only questions I have, so there'll be no, like, refrigeration or power, how does that work if it's just a fridge?
So, it's totally independent, it has, uh, I've got a generator on the back-
Okay.
-um, which powers my refrigeration, I have two small refrigeration units, I've been fully inspected by the Board of Health, um, I just had Nellie come and, uh, do a full inspection for the beginning of the season, which she signed off on, um, and, once again, uh, as far as ordering, purchasing, and receiving, that will be dealt with at Oro, um, some things will be prepared onsite at Oro, uh, and other things will be cooked, um, on, in the trailer itself, um, but in compliance with everything, and, you know, in refrigeration and all those things.
Do, uh, and my question's for Jim, really, the next question is, I, and I didn't see it in the package, should we have some sort of liability, you know, I would agree that you give you some wiggle room, whether you take it out or not, you know, you take that risk, but, do we need to have you waive our, because it's town property?
We're giving me a license to do it, it's not our building, it's not our-
Yeah.
Uh, look, I don't think we need a-
Okay, I just, in case somebody messes it up, it's your responsibility.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll double check, I don't think so.
Okay, um, and the only, only other thing, I, I get the whole sunset thing, just because there are residences there, I'm wondering about the eight o'clock, I don't know, I mean, I agree, people, it'd be great to, you know, take the kids down, get dinner and go watch the sunset.
Sure.
I'm just, um, that one, I, I, I kind of want to keep a close eye on, I know you guys will be responsible, but, um-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, if it becomes a, a thing where it's super popular, it may not be popular with the butter, so, I think that's something to be mindful of.
Fair enough, okay.
Are there any butters here tonight? No, okay.
And of course, then, if the, um, I would defer to, if the police chief has issues of where you're putting the van, then obviously, that would have to be, you'd have to move it.
Yeah, no problem, no problem at all.
Yeah.
Would you have a problem if we went to eight P M, and then, if we had an issue with any butter in the neighborhood, then would call Robin back in and tell him he's gotta modify things?
Oh, I'd be, I'd be open to that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be willing, I, I think it's okay to start with it, but I just want to be mindful of it, as popular as I think it might be.
Sure, and I mean, also on top of it, I mean, the last thing I want to do is, uh, you know, upset any local person in any way, shape, or form, so-
Right, it's not in your interest either.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tom, just, just a few other notes, um, and I, let me start off by saying, I love your food, I love the idea.
Thank you very much.
Um, but here's, I'm just trying to think ahead as to what-
Right.
-some things can pop up, um, the generator.
Mm-hmm.
So, there are residents in those areas, and I don't know that they're gonna want to listen to a generator running from eleven to eight.
Okay.
So, that's a concern of mine, I don't, I don't know how loud it is.
If it carries any weight at all, um, that, first of all, legitimate concern, um, I don't know if you recall when you were next to it, it's really, really quiet, it's one of those new Honda sixty-five, I mean-
Yeah, I don't-
It's super quiet.
Yeah.
Um, if that becomes an issue, um, that's definitely a bit of a problem, because, you know, without power, I can't do much.
Right, right.
Um, but what I would say is that, uh, it is, especially from the last, you know, the storms that we all had to go through the past few months, it is not like a generator that you would hear in the backyard, it is extremely loud, you know, it's pretty quiet.
Yeah, I'm willing to let it go, and see, and it's very windy there, and you don't hear, you know, it deflects, but you do have residents that live right there, depending on where you park, I would like to get a set place where you're gonna park, that, as Karen said, the police chief says this is a place that, that you can park, and that's where you're gonna be, and it'll, it'll help you also, because everyone will know that that's where you are.
It's consistent.
Um, and, um, the overnight, I'm not in favor of the overnight for the same thing, that there's residents there, and I don't know that they want a trailer parked in what they may believe is part their, you know, their driveway overnight, um, and personally, I think it's gonna get vandalized, we had a shack there that had lif, lif, um, guard stuff in it, and somebody went and burned it, so, um, a couple of years ago, so I, I think that's a recipe for a problem, um, so, consider that, um, the one other thing that I, I'm just concerned about is, in the past, people came before us, and there's a distance, there's like a radius, that you can't have an, uh, an establishment to other restaurants, I don't remember what the distance is.
That's a policy, for the Hockers, right.
Oh, good, what is the distance, do you know?
I have to look it up.
Yeah, so, I know in the past, people have tried, and it may have been Cole Parkway, too, like Maria's or stuff, I don't remember how far it is, but-
It was Hummer Rock that it came, I put the ice cream truck in.
Well, we've, yeah, we've talked about it for, for decades, but, I just want to make sure that that's not, like, all of a sudden, Maria's doesn't say-
Sure.
"All the pizzas I used to sell are now going to Robin's," you know, whatever.
It's not there, it's not gonna apply.
Understood.
I'll look that up.
Yeah, so, that's, that's the other thing that just struck my head, um, and the last thing that I wanted to, uh, just note is, I don't want to vote on it tonight, because I don't know that people have heard about it, so I'd like to give a butters one meeting to come in and see if they have any feedback before we say yes, and I'm-
Okay.
I'm going to, unless somebody comes up with something, I think it's a great idea, and I want to give you a chance to do it, I just think it's fair to have people that may not know this is going on, have the opportunity to come to a meeting and get-
It's not like it's June now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, that's why I asked if any butters were here, because I, I think that's a fair concern, especially because they live right there on the parking lot, so.
Sure, sure, so, other than that, I think it's, I'm looking forward to eating some of it, because I go to Peggy.
Have you, have you talked to any of the people that are right against the parking lot at all, or?
I have not, I have not, no.
Why, why don't you go down to the parking lot, take a look, location, maybe contact the, um, enforcement officer.
Okay.
Um, maybe, I was gonna say Mark Thompson, but it's not, whoever it is.
Taylor.
Taylor.
Uh, Taylor, and just say, hey, look, can we meet down there, what's a possible location that would be beneficial for-
Sure.
-site view, location for people coming off the beach, I say smell, you know, um, I do know the generator you're talking about, um, I know it's not that noisy, but, you know, just, so you have that, the next time we come back to the meeting.
Mm-hmm, hundred percent.
And that way, you can see it.
Okay.
Because I, I'm not sure whether the houses are gonna be able to have a view of it, they might see the top of the trailer, or, you know, or maybe they have a direct view of it, I forgot, I thought there's some fences up there, but, I didn't get down there to want to.
Some.
Yeah, so I guess I'm not sure whether or not that's where you're gonna be looking to try to locate the trailer, or not, um, and then I think the other thing is, the question is, if the trailer lay, stays there, if you're gonna leave the truck attached to it, then, or do you take it and leave it, I assume you probably take, leave it and then pick it up, because then you don't need more spacing, and it's a smaller space.
No, I, I, I would go, set up business.
Yep.
Detach, take the truck with me, go to Oro, leave it there, and at the end of the business, say, go, check in, you know.
Pick it up, yeah, that's probably the best course of action.
So, it's one hundred, I'll look that up for you, it's, um-
Two hundred feet.
For the purpose of selling those, and then three hundred feet for the store selling them there.
Just three hundred, okay, so it's nowhere near that, yeah, it must have been Cole Parkway that we were.
Yeah.
Cole was.
Yeah.
So, Robin, okay with that, if we can, uh, give some folks some time to understand that, what's, what the potential is here?
A full understanding of what, yeah, absolutely.
And I think John brought up a good point, too, is just to come back and sort of tell us where you've, you've determined is a good spot to park the trailer, just so it's a consistent space every time you're there, and everybody's in agreement that it's not blocking anything, or, you know, it's not an adverse spot.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think it's a great idea, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have no doubt that it will work out, but I think we need to check off a couple of those boxes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Absolutely.
All right, great.
Good, well, thank you so much.
Get you back on.
Is anyone else as hungry as I am right now?
I could have brought it tonight.
You may have got a yes, though.
Yeah.
Samples, right.
Just kidding, just kidding, thank you, Robin.
Thank you all very much, much appreciated.
Great night, we'll see you soon, in a couple weeks.
Couple hours.
All right, so, we'll bring Robin back, great, and then the next discussion vote was postponed, I'll just announce that again, for First Herring Brook Reservoir, so we won't be doing that, so next on the agenda is, uh, the water pipe replacement project update with, uh, Sean Anderson and Kevin Cafferty, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Sean, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Good evening.
Thanks for making the trip.
You got it.
So, we thought it would be a good idea to get you folks back in front of us, as well as the public, and give an update, um, you know, with the water pipe replacement project that's been ongoing for the past few years, kind of just refresh our minds of where we've been and, and where we're going, I'm sorry, yes, Lori?
So, we passed out to you tonight, the water main, the public work, the-
In our printed out packet?
Yep, page three, see, so, the water, and a picture of, uh, a lot of, uh, green area there.
Gotcha, thing one that's on the board?
Yeah.
All right.
Great, um, where we at today, we've replaced approximately twenty-one miles of pipe, um, and it's showing up on that plan right there, everything in red is all new pipe that we've put in, um, we've been noticing a lot of improvements in the system, um, we can go through, and what we'll do is, we'll update you where we are in, with our well, we did some redevelopment of our wells also, as well as the construction activity that's been going on, um, I did speak to the Water Resources Committee prior to this, and they gave us about six questions that people ask a lot, and thought it might be a nice idea if we brought it up and read the questions and read the answers, so that everybody could see it, especially dealing with brown water.
Okay.
Um, if that's okay.
Yep.
Um, so, thanks again to the Water Resources Committee, one of the questions they had, um, what is the water, what's in the water that makes it brownish in color sometimes? Um, that's iron and manganese sediment, um, that basically comes from our wells, it's been dealing with it since the water department's inception, um, in Situate, so, um, I know I brought it here before, but I've got our water rules and regulations from nineteen thirty-seven, and on page six, they've got a whole section on brown water and dirty water, and how the town is not liable for it, so, it, it does go back a little bit, and we, we keep this up in, also seventy-two, we keep the old ones up, uh, on the board in the water treatment, on the water plant, so if people want to stop down the office and see it, it's, it's interesting, as, as well as some old pictures, so, um, it's been a continuing problem in Situate, I mean, basically, it's, um, due to the soils and conditions, we do pick up, um, iron and manganese sediment, and how we get rid of it, now that we've got a lot of these pipes replaced, is through our flushing to get it out of the system, um, and that's, that's one of the things we, we can talk about.
Can you just explain the flushing, so people understand what that means?
So, what we do is, um, we isolate the water flow, so it comes from one area, and then what we'll do is, we'll open up a hydrant, and we'll run it through at a large capacity, like five hundred gallons per minute, to remove the sediment from the pipe, um, and, and we blast the water out as much as we can, and remove all the sediment, and we let it run, basically, until the water originally comes out darkish, because it's on a dead end, and then eventually, clears out, and it clears out that sediment in that pipe.
Ideally, what time do you do that?
We've been doing it during the day, and we flyer, as well as put up signs the night before, we make sure things are, are set up, um, and pick up the isolated areas, and so far, it's been working out pretty good.
Yes, I suppose, Kevin, that part of the reason is, when you isolate a section of pipe to blow out the manganese and iron, any of the laterals that go to the homes are susceptible to brown water, because if the brown water gets into the lateral, once they call for the water for whatever water, washing machine or bath, then it's in their, their line until it's, it's-
Exactly, until, until it's out, or until it settles out and goes back down into the pipe, um, so far, in some of the areas, we've been very successful, um, we did have one large flush that we didn't mean to, uh, during one of the storms, we lost the pipe at Peggy Beach, and it just basically drained, um, drained one of our water tanks, just the amount of water we lost with those pipes, that pipe that was broken, and that-
Didn't drain it fully, but we lost about a million gallons of water in a very short period of time.
Wow.
Um, so you can imagine the flow that was going through, um, and it's, um, maybe it's not a good example, but it's kind of like taking a snow globe and shaking it up at a gift store, and you see, you know, all the snow flying, that shook the entire water system, and that's why they're getting complaints from all over the place.
But that was March, what, fourth, that, that storm, when we lost the water pipe?
We'll have that written down.
Same time in March.
It was, it was sometime in March, and we're, we're in the process of repairing it now, and we had some issues when we were repairing it, when the contractor was tying into the new pipe, we've since connected that pipe, and that pipe's replaced, we haven't done the connections on the laterals to those houses that was, that was removed, so that's ongoing.
So, are folks in that area still experiencing brown water as a result, or is it cleared up yet?
Well, we've had several water main breaks, um, some due to the storms, and then some after the storms, um, so we did, we had a long period of, a lot of complaints, we had about a ten-day period where it went completely silent, um, and I have reached out to the areas, basically, we started flushing the last week of February, because the weather was nice then, um, and then, of course, it turned cold, and we had the three nor'easters that came along, and just shook everything up, um, we started flushing again this week, and, as I said, I've reached out to just some of the areas, um, that I had, that we had flushed originally, and, uh, two of the people that I spoke with, who had discolored water, um, very often, said it had cleared up a lot, that they were able to even wash their whites, which they hadn't been able to do in a long time, so, um, we know that the flushing that we're, that we are getting done is helping.
Okay.
It's just a matter of getting out there, and to enough places and getting it done.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, no worry, nope, uh, it's all good, um, so one of the other questions is, what causes the water to be clear one day and brown the next, in, um, typically, a disruption, disruption in the system, a water break, somebody opening a hydrant, or even our flushing can cause disruptions to the service system throughout the system, and, it's a closed system, so, if there's a water break, say in Cedar, you know, Cedar Point, there isn't any more, because we replaced that, but, in that general vicinity, you might feel something on Hadley Road, because the water all draws to that system where the opening is, so for example, if a hydrant was opened up at Cedar Point, all the water in the system can change flow, and start heading towards Cedar Point to meet the demands of the fire department, or, or whatever's going on with that hydrant, so that's, that's one of the issues we have.
Kevin, how, how, how much more flushing are you planning during, is it just the spring months, all the way through summer, what's your schedule look like?
Uh, we're gonna flush as much as we can, and that's something Sean and I have talked about, that's why we started as early as February, it's when we have our water, um, you know, if we're running out of water in the reservoir, and our demand is high, obviously, we can't go and flush the system, because we don't want to drain our reserves, so, um-
So, you're focusing on the spring months?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, and if we can do a fall flushing, we'll do a fall flushing also.
Okay.
Um, as I said, it just depends on our water supply, what our reserve is.
Is there any other technique, besides flushing, that other communities are doing? And I say that because, obviously, with water being potentially limited, is there other, some other mechanism that we can get in to burrow the crud, the iron and manganese off the pipes, that other towns are doing, or other communities, do you know of anything?
Um, Mike from Ty and Bond recently, um, said that there is another town that is Mike from Tyon Bond recently said that there is another town that is looking into some ice, ice pigging.
They were talking about ice pigging.
What, what is it called?
What they do is they put, what they call, it's like a plug of ice and they push it through the pipe with a high-pressure velocity. It's called a pig, the piece that goes through and it drags everything out and pulls the sediment out. It can be expensive and it requires opening up hydrants or even opening up the pipe in the road and.
Doing it.
Setting an entrance through it. We also met with an engineering firm recently and talked about it and asked for a better way or quicker way that our flushing program would be more effective. When we saw what they would require, it really wouldn't work for us because we don't have the water supply to do the amount of flushing that they're, they're suggesting. We would drain our reservoir in a couple of days, the way, the amount of water that they would want to flow through. So, it's a significant, a significant flow that we couldn't keep up with. But it is, it is something that we looked at.
Sorry, just curious.
So, one of the other questions is how long will the planned flushing of the mains continue? When is the end of flushing season? So, we're hoping to go into May. It depends when our flows elevate so much with, with the town and what the demand is, but we'd go as long as we can flushing until it, it no longer is, you know, our demand's too high or we're creating disturbances in the system. And as I, again, as I said, in the fall, we would try to pick it up again in the fall. Does the brown coloration pose a safety concern for bathing or drinking? According to the DPPA, there are no rule restrictions on manganese or iron, but, you know, I would always say use the common sense rule. I mean, if you're getting black water, I wouldn't really drink it, just, you know, I'd try to watch it. And we have, we have water at the Water Department. If people are having problems, they can come by and get some water to use for drinking and a couple of gallons of water that we make available. So, one of the other questions is from the Water Resources Department. I've heard when the water is brown, to flush out the line with cold water only, is this true? And what we tell people is yes, use your outside spigot, turn it on, open it up and let the water get out of, out of the house and run it for a while. Typically, fifteen, more than any, you know, within fifteen minutes, the water clears up and it shouldn't be a problem. But then again, we can call the Water Department, let us know where it is and we can start tracking it. Their other question was should I periodically drain my hot water heater to remove sediment that could be on the bottom? And our answer to that was it, it depends on your manufacturer's recommendations for the water heater. So, those were the questions and.
That really goes to speak to the previous question about flushing the cold water only and why. And that's, you flush the cold water to prevent the buildup from getting into your hot water tanks. That's really, that's the reason why on that.
So, the other thing we can do is we've been making a lot of improvements on our wells. So, do you want to give the update on the wells, Asher?
Well, number ten, this well was redeveloped and treated with pantognite. The past production rate was ninety to one hundred and five gallons per minute and it was, it has now been improved to a production of approximately one hundred and thirty-eight gallons per minute.
Before you go on, Sean, one thing, I don't even know where all the wells are. So, if I don't know, I don't think anyone in the room does besides you two. Where's well take? Could you just tell us the number and then where it's located?
Sure, ten and eleven both are on Route.
Off one twenty-three.
They combine together and are treated in one facility.
So, this came up before in one of the meetings. The Board had asked, we put a map up for the, for where all the wells are. And we said, yes, no problem. And Mike Stewart was calling me fifteen minutes later and said, we don't want to broadcast where all our water wells are. So, we, that's why we don't, I mean, they're findable. But the other thing I just want to bring up is the pantognite that Sean's been adding to the wells is to, it reacts and it eliminates some of the iron and manganese that's supposed to come in the wells. And it's supposed to improve the clarity and color from the wells that we get out of there. So, it, it would be less manganese throughout the system. And that's one of the things that Sean brought in that we've been doing with the wells to try to eliminate the source, some of the source.
Good.
Thank you. And you're doing that in all the wells now or just, you're going through your list right now?
We have been, yep.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
Yep, no, it's okay. Well, number eleven was redeveloped at the same time as ten or right after ten, also using the pantognite product. The production rate was around forty-five gallons per minute prior to and it was improved to eighty gallons per minute after. Well, eleven, out of the two wells, seven and eleven, well number eleven does have slightly elevated iron. So, it's one of the sources that adds a little bit of the red tint out into the system. Well, seventeen A, we redeveloped last year. Pilot study has been conducted to review the viability of the green sand filter system at this site. We are also still in the permitting phase of running a water feed to the reservoir on that well.
So, that, that's the well that, that pumps to the, to the pond you see out by the rotary. It's not usable. It's a high-production well. We don't use it anymore. We use it to supply water to the plant, but it doesn't go directly into the system. That was a high-manganese and iron well that came up a while back. That's where we're looking to do the green sand filter and eventually get that back online. But it was really plugging that whole area with a lot of brown water.
And that's what we just approved at town meeting, right?
We just approved additional funding and then we'll be looking for.
So, what's the timing for that green sand filter?
It's still in design and permitting phases and then we'll be coming back for more money for construction.
So, next year?
Four to five years, probably.
Probably, probably two. We're hoping two years. But by removing that and getting that water directly into the system saves a lot of treatment because we're double treating that water. We pump it out and then we pump it, we pay to pump it all the way to the reservoir and then we run it through the filter system and everything else, the treatment plant. And that's electricity as well as chemicals that are involved. So, if we can get it into the system, it'll be an improvement to the system with our capacity and flows and.
Absolutely. And until we can have the treatment to put it right, directly into the system, running the line to the reservoir will be a huge help because the way it's set up right now, it's going right into Old Oak and Bucket and right into the treatment plant, which is not designed to remove manganese. So, that does add to our problem of.
Color and clarity.
Color and clarity. So, that leads us to, seventeen A is on Old Oak Road.
Tac Factory Pond.
Tac Factory Pond, yeah. Well, nineteen, a contract has been issued to redevelop this well. Again, the same company got it with the pantognite product. Its current yield is two sixty-nine. We'll see how, how that goes.
And that's, that's typical just to maintain the wells. I mean, it's what we're going to get the habit of and Sean's implemented is say a five-year program to keep redeveloping these wells and keep them, keep them fresh, keep them clean and keep them working as opposed to sucking them dry and, you know, letting them go.
Yeah. Well, twenty-two is the one that we drilled a new satellite well. It's called twenty-two R now. DEP gave us approval to put it online April first and the yield has been increased significantly. It's, it's been a great addition.
And you know what, I, I meant to bring in a little prop and I forgot because we were going to do this earlier and I ran in. But one of the cool things with that well, and you can tell me I'm getting carried away, instead of having dirt backfill around the stainless steel screen, is there's actually small glass beads. And the glass beads go around it and it improves the flow in the intake of what, of what the water comes in. It's, it's a new technology that we put in on that well when we drilled it. So, it's supposed to improve the raw water that you get out of the system and prevent future collapses of the well. So, it's kind of exciting for us.
It makes, it also makes it easier to redevelop in the future.
What's, what's the flow on that one now?
That one is.
Sorry.
I believe we were a hundred and eighty gallons per minute prior to and we're up to two hundred and forty now.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
That's a plus.
And then we're down to well eighteen B. That's down on the, off of the driftway. The well has been redeveloped and the yield production was increased from ninety-five gallons per minute up to one hundred and fifty-three gallons per minute. We can actually even go higher than that, but our permit is for a hundred and fifty gallons per minute by DEP. However, that is our well that has the highest level of manganese in the water. So, currently, for about a month and a half now, I have had that well offline. When I started to do the flushing, I decided to take that well offline and see how that affected everything. And in talking with my chief operator today, we take four samples out in the system for manganese at various locations that go out to a lab. And then we also take raw and finished samples at all of our sources on a weekly basis and the treatment plant and do in-house testing for manganese. Now, the samples we've sent out to the labs, we're now getting no detects out in the system for manganese, which is, we've never seen before.
That's really good news.
Yeah, so I'm really, you know, if we need it, if it's, you know, an emergency, we can use eighteen, you know? But I really think it's probably a good idea to keep that offline for a while.
And we may, during the heavy summer months, July fourth, when the water demand becomes significant, the, the well may have to go on just to keep up with our water needs because we have gone up to three million gallons per day.
Close to three, yep.
And in July, you know, July fourth weekend and, you know, sometimes just to keep up with demand, that well will have to go on.
Okay.
So, okay, that's, that's our wells.
Can I ask a quick question about, like, you have a well that's off. So, that water's just getting pumped out of another well, right? I mean, the well's obviously not going to fill up. It's, it's drilled down into our aquifer. So, what's the benefit of not, other than saving on the, the use of the pumps and the equipment, what's the difference between pumping it out of well two or well three?
Well, just that particular area seems we're getting higher levels of manganese and iron coming out of the well. So, it could be the surrounding area where there might be larger iron and manganese deposits. So.
But isn't that water now flowing to another well that's being pumped out?
Unnecessarily. It, it could be, it could be a different aquifer and that's further down the system. That's actually the well that's at the golf course. So, it's further down, closer to the driftway as opposed to the other wells up off, off one twenty-three. So, the water, the way they say the groundwater is it travels down towards, towards the ocean. So, it's, it flows down, if that makes sense.
Comments on that or?
Yeah, it does, it makes sense to me as well. There's an abandoned well of ours that Widow's Walk uses for an irrigation well and that has extremely high levels of manganese. And that is actually further down towards the ocean. So, if that water is traveling anywhere, it's traveling down that direction.
Okay.
It's a good question though.
Makes sense.
So.
Well, when they're done, I just have a few things when they're done.
Okay. One of the other things that we've done, which we mentioned earlier in the year, is we replaced the carbon filter in the plant itself, which was a huge accomplishment. And when we did it, it was a little scary. We did it in the, in the fall. But everything's moved well and we've had great results from that.
Some excellent sampling results from that. We even got a call from the DEP because we had a, a no detect for total organic carbon out of our finished water. Typically, they like, we have to maintain, I believe it's a seventy percent removals rate of total organic carbon from between your raw and your finished water. And we were showing nothing in the finished. So, that just threw up a red flag at DEP and they called us. And my chief operator explained to them, we just replaced our entire carbon bed. And he went, oh, okay, that makes sense. So, we're getting some really good, good sample results. And as a result of that as well, our disinfection byproducts, THMs are called and HAA fives, which are potential carcinogens, we have to sample for those and maintain levels, low levels out in the system. All those levels have gone down.
Excellent. Because of that carbon filter?
Because of the carbon filter.
And we were always, we were always below the DEP levels anyways on that. But, but we're even, we're lower, we were, which is, which is great. And let me see. So, in, in the future, we've got a huge number of hydrants we've replaced, water services to different houses, copper. The system's a lot tighter. You've noticed the leak detection in, in the mainland's gone way down for, for water loss.
Aside from the storms and the breaks.
Yeah, the storms and the breaks. We have another project we're getting ready to put out and that's going to include Oceanside Drive as well as sections of Gannett Road. Where a lot of the pipe projects that we're doing are, we're transferring water services over from an old pipe to a newer pipe. So, just for example, Beck, they put a pipe in, and I'll use in front of St. Mary's as an example, they put a pipe in nineteen oh one along St. Mary's. Then they came and put another pipe in nineteen fifty-eight or nineteen sixty. So, there were two parallel pipes. The problem is they connected everybody up on one side to one pipe and everybody on the other side to the other pipe. So, that pipe from nineteen oh one was still in service and that's been causing us a lot of problems. So, what we've been doing is we're working up on Grove Street, switching services over. We're going to be doing it in this future project on Gannett Road. And there's a few other roads we're doing it to deactivate those old pipes.
That was going to be my question. Does that situation exist in other areas of town that we haven't gotten to yet?
Yes.
It does?
Yep.
It'll sort of be the ongoing, like, as you continue to move them on to the newer pipes?
It'll be on, it'll be ongoing. And then we have a lot of sections in town that we have an inch and a half galvanized pipe that was put in to feed the neighborhood as opposed to a six-inch or an eight-inch pipe. So, that's something that we would be getting into in the future and start replacing those. That's one of the problems we have on Utility Road, there's a mismatch of pipe and there's, some of the side streets have smaller pipes and we're going to be working on that in the future as we go. But we have, you know, our long-term plans to get it squared away. So, that's, that's where we are. Is there anything else we missed, Sean, or did I?
No, I just, like you say about the, the, the winter and the spring was particularly tough on the distribution system, you know, with the main breaks. And I know we caused a lot of discolored water out there. And I'd like to thank the residents for their patience with us and hope they understand that we are, our goal is to clean the system. It's just taking us some time to do it. And we do more thing, every Friday, we post a letter updating where we're going to be the next week for flushing. And we've also put out signs where we're going to be to let people know.
You're posting that on our town?
On the town website.
Facebook page or just the website?
On the, I believe it's just on the website.
It's on the website.
You should probably do both, I think, while you're doing it.
We could do it, it's just, it's an added step. It's an added step for Lorian, it's easy for us. We'll just send her an email.
Exactly, yeah.
Thanks. And the other thing I was just going to say is, you know, down the Water Department, they're testing the water daily. They're testing it from the wells, they're testing it from the treatment plant when that's in, in production. If there are people that are interested in taking a tour of the water treatment plant, I'm more than willing to give a tour with Sean. We've taken some groups. We had a group of Anthony, Antonello just had a, a big group of people that came through there from the senior center. We're willing to take people through it and maybe, you know, a day during the week or something, we could show them what's going on there. But it is, it's an impressive, it's an impressive facility. It is older, but it's, it's working, it's working the way it should.
Sean?
Kevin, so we've done, or we're getting close to having been done twenty-two miles of pipe. The total in the town is what?
About a hundred and ten.
Okay. So, the reason I ask is two weeks ago, and I just deleted it from my phone, he'll kill me for doing that, but two weeks ago on Tilden Road and Shadwell, I got pictures of brown towels that were white that turned brown and my fear, and Tony and I have spoken about this in the past, we're going to do the third, all of our, you know, pipes that we, that we're going to do and we're still going to have brown water. So, we're going to still have eighty miles, hopefully not hundred-year-old pipes, but certainly older pipes. So, and I've heard this term before about flushing, but I don't think some of our infrastructure will handle that. We'll have more breaks than we've had in the past. We used to average one a week before I think both of you were here. That, that, that's a lot.
We were averaging, we were averaging more than one a week. I know Cedar Point at one time had broken twelve times in a year, it was breaking once a month. You know, by doing all this replacement, we are tightening up the system. It's allowing us, it's allowing us to flush and make improvements.
Right, without a doubt. I think one mistake we made, and this is, again, before you were here, Kevin, I, you know, this idea of relining pipes was, I think, a complete waste of money. Just should have, if they're too old, trying to line them with concrete, just dig them up and replace them or leave them, abandon them and lay new lines. When was the last time we flushed the stand tank on Pinching Hill, Laura?
Okay.
Okay. And how often?
We cleaned it.
Last time I saw it was Jimmy DeBarros had asked me to go up and that was a few years ago, but prior to that, it had been, and again, years before you guys were here, people did not, we did not flush, you know, and that was because I think they were afraid to.
Sean can address that actually.
Yeah, we're required by DEP every three to five years to do a full tank inspection, both inside and out. Last fall, we had both tanks inspected and they found seven inches of sediment in the Maple, Maple Street tank.
Yep.
And they cleaned that out while they were here. And then when they did the inspection of the Pinching Hill tank, they found eighteen inches of sediment.
Oh.
Now, they didn't have the time, nor did we have the funds at that, you know, we didn't appropriate enough funds for the project to do that. So, we planned on doing it later. They started that project today, they're going to finish it up tomorrow.
How do you do, do you drain the whole tank or do you just?
They, they dive the tank. Yeah, we can't do, you know, we don't have the luxury of taking it offline, so.
Was Pinching Hill part of my ignorance?
Creelman.
Creelman, Creelman tank, Manlot.
Got it.
Also replacing the valves on that at this time?
That's the one that we need to replace the valves. That's why I can't take it offline to clean it because when I was getting quotes, soliciting quotes to do this project, there were companies that wanted to drain it to clean it and give me a quote for that and I just can't, I can't do that, so. So, they send down divers, they send down multiple divers because it's only, it's very strict on how many hours they can be in the, in the tank. So, they have to come up and switch divers and the new one goes down.
So, will that process clear some of the brown water for that area? Like, does that feed it in at all to the cushing area, you know, that you say is a low point in the system? Like, will that help that?
It's certainly not going to hurt it. I mean, that's eighteen inches of sediment.
Right.
You know, is going to move around if we don't take care of it, so.
Right.[1759.41]
Does that cleaning process act, actually, like, as you said, snowglow it as they're, yeah? So it's going to get worse before it gets better then?
Oh, when they're in there? They're very good about when they're in there, about not disturbing while they're vacuuming it.
Okay.
They're very, very good about that. Typically, they start and they, they focus on the inlet-outlet pipe and make sure that they get everything clear around that. Then they work their way away from it.
And how come we don't flush at night? Overtime?
It's a combination of overtime. A big one is safety. At nighttime is when you're most at risk for, you know, somebody falling asleep, you know, just at-risk drivers at night. And the staff being able to, to do an overnight and then be fresh the next day and still work, you know. Multiple days of it really tears on them.
So if you're, when you're flushing, you know, I know you're isolating the line, but if someone along that line does draw water, they're gonna get brown water.
That's why we're, we're trying to communicate as much as we can ahead of time about the areas we're going to be in, letting them know we're going to be in those areas so that they know that when they come home, if they saw, you know, on our website that we're going to be in their area, and then they see our signs on their street, and they see signs that we've been there, because you, you will notice it, because you will see the water that we've, you know, we've spilled out. They'll know that they need to run their cold water. And, and most likely probably run one load of laundry empty first before you.
People don't see the signs. They might, you know, they might not leave the house. They don't know it. And the first thing they do is do laundry.
Do we do any calling? Do we do any?
We typically don't do calls, but one of the things I'd like to say too is, it gives Sean the opportunity to kind of oversee them and make sure that everybody's flushing properly, that they're not just opening it, letting it flush for five minutes and closing it up. That the guys are flushing at the right amount of times and everything else. And it gives us the opportunity, if we did have a break or some sort of major problem, we could pull the guys off flushing and go out and handle that. You know, what happens is if you put them on at night, I mean, the guys get beat up pretty quick.
They do. And as Kevin was saying, it gives me a chance to get out and work with the guys. I actually got less complaints the first week we flushed during the day than I did when we flushed at night.
You don't want to wake up to brown water.
No, but I do think, I think, I do think we can elevate our level of communication. Again, you know, just, people don't always go to the website. People don't always look at Facebook, but they do pick up a phone call. Like, if there's a way to isolate, and I don't know if this is possible with our directory and how we could do this, but if there is a way to isolate an area and put out a call that says, "Flushing starting, you know, Monday morning at eight AM," whatever it is, and it's going to last till Tuesday, whatever that is, I just think the more that we can advise people, the better off we're going to be.
I can tell you that with condo associations, management companies, we reach out to them to let them know, so that they can reach out to their residents, because they usually have a quick means of getting ahold of everybody who lives in the building. And they notify them. We actually did one for tomorrow. The condo complex, we, we reached out to them today, the management company. They're notifying the residents. And we also put out our signs today, letting everybody know that we're going to be in the area tomorrow. I agree with you on the, on the communication. Anything you can think of, Water Resource Committee is always willing to help out. I think this questionnaire was a good one. Maybe there's something we can add to the, to the questionnaire about the flushing.
Karen, did you have any questions?
No, I just have one public service, service announcement from the Water Resources Committee is, when you do, if you are in the situation where you have to flush out your lines, especially as we get into warmer months, it's a great idea and practice to capture that water for your plants. A lot of people did that during the drought, and it's a good reminder that if you're going to use the water, you might as well use the water.
Thank you for that conservation update. John, did you have any questions for the team, comments?
How many complaints did you have last month in general, by comparison to the previous?
I asked Linda to print that out. She emailed it to me, and I forgot to bring it when I left. During one of the tougher times, easily a hundred calls a day.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah.
So is it unrealistic to think that you're ever going to get all, all of it out? I mean, we've replaced a third of our, of our lines. I remember that's what we talked about when we, when we signed on to this project. People's tax, you know, water rates went, went up to pay for this. You know, we were told that this was going to eliminate brown water. But is, is that really unrealistic? I mean, is, is it, I know we're not going to have as many breaks because these, you know, seventy-five-year-old lines aren't going to break anymore because they're new. But is the brown water, is it unrealistic that you just, at some point, you flushed all of your system and it's, and maintenance keeps it to a minimum?
It's not unrealistic. It's going to take time, but at a certain point, we will reach a turning, a tipping point where, like you're saying, by going out in the spring and fall and flushing, we eliminate all the calls that we used to get during the summer.
So what's the time?
You know, you have to still continue to do it because it's still accumulating. You can never stop flushing. You know, once you start the flushing program, you just continue it.
But what, what's a realistic time? So we've invested a lot of time and money into our water infrastructure. What is, I mean, are we almost there? Or is this really not ten years away? Is this?
I haven't been here long enough to answer that definitively. I would say certainly three to five years. But I don't want to, you know.
And hopefully sooner. I mean, that's conservative. We don't know how much sediment's in the system. There was no flushing for years and years and years. Now that we are able to do the flushing, we're hoping we can get all the stuff out of the system. We did say we do have some velocity problems with the amount of water that we have in backup. But, you know, the guys are going to continue the water, and do the best they can to, to get it moving.
It's certainly not a judgment on effort. The effort is there.
Yeah.
It's, but it is one of the biggest complaints that we get.
Absolutely.
Because people expect to have clean water to bathe and to, and to, and to consume. So it's, it's a huge issue, and it costs people money when they do a load of laundry and all of a sudden, everything comes out rusty. So I think we were kind of given the thought that this investment would change it. And it hasn't dramatically changed it. And that's just, just what my, you know, not disappointment, but kind of shock or surprise is that, that it's still, every year, we still get the same amount of issues with brown water. And I didn't know how close we are to a solution, if there really isn't. It's just the fact of life that we've got a lot of these, these ores in our water, and it's just going to accumulate all the time.
Well, I can tell, was speaking with Nora, my office manager, that she's been here a long time, and she's fielded a lot of these calls. And she said the volume of calls, particularly in the summer, have gone down greatly with all the water main construction that's gone on. It's just, I don't want to say, use the wrong word, but the, the ones that are still left with the discolored water are all that more upset because it hasn't improved for them. So the-
And are we honing in on those areas where that hasn't improved?
That's what I'm trying to do with our flushing program.
With, okay.
You have to start strategically, either at your tanks or at your sources. We decided to start at the plant. And while we're running the plant, move out away from it and flush clean water as you're going. My goal is to get into the highest complaint areas as quickly as possible.
I guess to sort of leap off of what Tony's saying, what I want to ensure we don't do is wait too long to decide that, okay, we've got to do like a phase four or whatever the next juncture is to make sure we can eradicate it more. I don't want to get into that situation where, okay, we have to wait three to five years and then, oh, yeah, well, maybe we should have planned this two years ago to kick in. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, where is that, and I don't expect you to answer it right now, but to think about, you know, where is that threshold of taking that next step and not living, you know, I, we can't be complacent about it. And, and, you know, and being proactive and trying to plan, where is that next step and threshold where we're going to take the next piece of pipe to replace or, or whatever it is, whatever that big step is. And just to be mindful of having that forefront and not waiting five years to decide, oh, you know, because we all know that finances are tight. But this is a core, you know, component to our livelihood that is a high priority for everybody here. So I think, that's my only comment to leave you with, is how do we, you know, look ten years down the road and make sure that we're taking care of it proactively and not constantly reacting?
It's a very, very good question, good topic, because one of the variables with the flushing program is whether or not in the fall, we're going to have the water to do it. And if I find that consecutively, we do, do not have the water to do the flushing in the fall, then we are going to have to come up with a Plan B. Because just, you know, just flushing once a year, a system with a hundred and twelve, a hundred and ten miles of water main, we're never going to get through it.
See, it's, it's a, it's an interesting quandary because we could continue to replace pipe, but if we can't flush, if you can't get, if you can't get a complete clean system, and even if we did have a complete clean system, where we're drawing the water from is going to continue to bring in the iron and manganese. So we're stuck because replacing the pipes, I was curious, like, if we could go back and take a look at the first year of pipes, is there any sediment building up on the pipe? Probably not. But I'd be curious if we had like a test. Next time we put a pipe in, we should have like a test pipe to see over a year or two, is it beginning to build up on the wall? I don't know if that's possible or not. But I'm like, and then it's a question of where's it coming from? Could be from within the system, could be from where it's coming out of the ground. But to Tony's point, and probably Sean, you know, when we sat down and said, "Let's do a mile here, a mile there," and we finally said, "No." Let's, and this is not any, either one of yours' problems. I mean, we said, "Let's go to the, let's take twenty-one or twenty-two miles and get it done." With the idea that we're replacing the oldest pipes. And it's disappointing because I'm sitting here going, boy, we thought it was going to be the panacea, that it was going to solve the situation. We'd be able to open up the pipes, flush them, get the crud out, and then move on. And it's, the, the difficulty with the water, I'm not sure.
It's got to be fixed at the source.
It's, it's, but the problem with the source is it's either inside the pipe corroded or, or, it's at the well.
No, it'd be, it'd be from the well pulling up the, the iron and manganese. And that's why we initiated the pantenite process.
That could be the long-term solution. And then you try to clean out the pipes that are still coagulating.
And, well, the solution too for, for your wells is, is always the option of like a green sand filter. But they're, you know, five, six million dollars. They're very expensive. You know, that's, you know, that's why we're trying to be prudent with it. Our, you know, the original hope is that we can get a lot of flushing and, and make vast improvements to the system.
Did you notice with the flushing, like I heard, I assume, one was Stockbridge, I heard. I don't know if that's true or not. Are those older pipes based upon, you know, the, the age of the pipes that we have in the system?
It's, it's not the buildup on the pipes. It's the sediment, the sediment just settles at the bottom of the pipe. So it's, it's just sediment that builds up there. So that's why if somebody had a, a newer pipe in front of their house, they could get some brown water because the sediment gets pushed through wherever that hydrant's opened or anything to that effect.
But I've seen the pipes you have over here, that they're all like tuberculated. They're all enclosed.
And that's, that was a huge source, that was a huge source of iron and a buildup where all that manganese and iron could, was settling in and getting caught up. And it was a really turbulent flow. So it, it's both, it's both. The new, those pipes had to be addressed regardless. So they, you know.
Is there any way of sending down like a camera to try to inspect to see, I mean, is it too small to figure out these, some of these lines to see if they're really, is that another process or is that, you can't, because they're pressured, you'd have to shut it off to go down?
You'd have to shut down the line, take out the hydrants maybe and run something down there.
Oh, yeah, because it's a pressurized system. Yeah, sorry. Well, you're doing, you're doing the best you can. And Sean, I appreciate you coming up and, and mentioning, you know, not trying, trying to sugarcoat it, telling us that, you know, that it could be another plan that we have to think about. It's a, it's a problem that's been going on. We're trying to address it. So don't get down on it. I mean, this, we're doing a great job. You're doing a great job trying to, to deal with the water. It's just, it's discouraging, not just for us, for you, I'm sure, to get the phone calls after we do this, and, and certainly with the residents. But I appreciate the information.
It was, it was hard. You know, we did a great job. My guys did a great job flushing Driftway, New Driftway, Ken Street, some of the side streets, you know, late in February. And then, you know, we lose a water main down on Inahaba Road. And, you know, it's like starting from scratch again, you know.
Yeah, frustrating.
And the other thing, we had a huge problem when we replaced the pipe under three A, that went underneath the rotary, because it actually changed the flows to the system. We didn't, I, I think, after looking at everything, I think we were getting minimal flow from those wells. I think they were going up three A and around the other way because that pipe was so corroded and deteriorated, and God knows how much it was leaking. Because that was from, I think, nineteen, pre-nineteen eleven or nineteen seventeen?
Seventeen rings in my head, yeah.
It was a very, very, very old pipe, and it changed the whole flow rate of the system when we put the new pipe in, which was, it was a surprise to us that it took us a while to adjust how to handle that.
Well, we appreciate you guys coming in. And all I would leave you with is, you know, bubble up whatever solutions are up there. You know, it's our job as the administration, as, as the board, to determine how to pay for things and to determine where we're going to take a leap to fix things, you know. That's what I would leave you with because I think we all know that the fix is very expensive. But not to hold back and to really make sure that, you know, we partner with you to, to whatever we need to do and put before the voters, you know. It's their drinking water. So if, you know, we tell them it's going to be another X million dollars, then let's, let's ask, let's ask for that if we need to. So that's what I would leave you with, is just to make sure that we bubble up any concerns there. But great job. You did a great.
I like that.
You like that?
Bubble up.
But I will say from years past, the, the calls have gone down. I hope, I hope they continue to be down. One of the true, you know, setups in the system was July fourth weekend. We used to get four hundred calls. And, and that's gone down significantly from, from the past couple of years. I mean, there's still calls, but it has gone down.
Well, Sean, thank you for all your leadership.
Thank you, guys.
You did a great job. Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, tell them the water department, they have our support. Don't worry about that. Just, we need this discussion, all right?
Kevin, you're staying, right? Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Yeah, we need him.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for patience on that. What an important topic. Next is Fifty Country Way Sewer Connection. I know Mr. Guard, Steve, out there. He went home. Peter Genta?
He was hovering out there.
Revisiting an issue?
What?
This is revisiting an issue that came before us, I want to say in December. Hi, Steve.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
Hi, Steve.
Fine, thank you. How was everyone?
Very good.
Very good.
So we're back. With me is Mr. Genta, Peter Genta, for the project owner. And we have received a quote from a company up in Waymouth. Is it Calico? Is that how you say it? I'm not really sure. P.
Caliaco.
Caliaco Corp. in Waymouth. Apparently, according to, Mr. Cafrey is a reputable company that can handle this type of work. And the quote is sixty-eight thousand dollars. Does not include permitting. The, the particular area, as I'm sure you are aware, this particular pipe is going to involve a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission and the issuance of an order of conditions in order to be removed and replaced and whatnot, so that we don't, because it will be in a resource buffer zone area right along the river. So the projected timeline for that is, you know, just doing some quick math, is minimum sixty days to get through the engineering that we need to plan, file a notice of intent, get on the agenda of the Conservation Commission for a public hearing. And then, of course, the appeal period's probably not a big deal, but we wouldn't expect to have a order of conditions in hand for probably sixty days, assuming we come to some conclusion this evening and then move forward on that. The, and then, according to Mr. Genta, it's two weeks worth of work, basically, to get the budget.
That was in his email.
According to the, yeah.
According to the contractor.
Fortunately, the, I was going over this with Peter, the, the area that this is going to be taking place is between the asphalt gravel parking lot in the, the Dance Studio River Shed area, and between that area and the river itself. So they're going, they're not going to be out in the middle of the parking lot digging through for a two-week period. It's going to be along the edge from the pump station out to a manhole.
To a manhole, more towards the street.
More towards the street. So the, we left off last time talking about, you know, the possible joint venture with the town and contribution for the cost. So the sixty-eight thousand would be for the work. I think that, I go back to my initial statement from December that I think twenty-five percent of that is fair. But on top of that, Mr. Genta and I were talking about, we would pick up the cost to permit the project, which would be, you know, not in substantial engineering and legal costs to get through the Conservation Commission hearing process. And then, of course, applying for, I don't know what you need for site, site permits to, to do the work with the DPW. So that would be our proposal. The, the, when we left last time, I reviewed the videotape from our meeting last time because it was spent so long that I couldn't remember exactly what we talked about. And I must confess, my notes were- because it was spent so long that I couldn't remember exactly what we talked about, and I must confess, my notes were not very good. And while we talked about the two buildings that are there now, they're almost ready to come online. One of them, Building 1 would be able to be occupied. We anticipate June, but it's gonna be, the work will be done in about two weeks. So, what he's hoping is June, July, and August would be the three buildings as they phase in. We talked last time about allowing the buildings to at least have full capacity to get everything up and running, meaning the water system turned on, the water meter installed, the electrical system being turned on as well, energized as well. And then, Mr. Bangert made a comment during that, that the sewer pipe issue would be, wasn't, the work didn't need to be done until the third building came online. So, the town's leverage is obviously the occupancy permits for those buildings as we move forward. Peter knows a little bit more about the construction hangups right now because the water isn't turned on. I'll just give you a couple that I'm familiar with, and one is that we cannot energize the electrical system in the building because it has to be grounded to the water meter. I asked the question, "Why you couldn't just ground it to the water system?" Apparently, you can't do that. That is an answer above my pay grade, but it can't be done. The meter has to be installed in order to ground the electrical system so that we can actually energize and get the sign-offs that we need. We can't have electrical sign-offs and water plumbing sign-offs until all of this stuff gets done. So, we talked about it last time, but I, when reviewing the meeting last time, I did notice that we, we sort of jumped to, "Okay, come back," with a quote because we thought we'd be back. Which was totally reasonable, bless you, totally reasonable assumption at that time. We didn't, we didn't have any idea it was gonna take this long to get quotes, and we did diligently pursue various contractors to try to give us quotes. We did get a quote early on from FedCorp, the company that did the work for the town in the first place, but they're not available until November, so that just wasn't feasible for our timeline. So, this company stepped up and did that. There are, what are the other issues? We can't energize, like right now, we have the sprinkler system for the building only turned on partially.
Yeah, we do need the water opened up for the sprinkler, for the fire suppression, so that we can pressurize the system, test it, and get it up and running.
That is, you do have fire protection now, correct?
We have, the gate, the gate valve isn't open. We have, the fire hydrants are live.
Okay.
But the, the valves to the buildings for the sprinkler system needs to be opened more. They're opening partially.
All right, okay.
So, what we're asking is that we have permission to bring the two buildings online, Buildings 1 and Building 2 online, have the water meters installed, get occupancy permits for those as we go, and allow us the opportunity to permit the replacement of the pipe and get that installed. The third building would not be allowed to come online until we were able to get that pipe finished and signed off, so. And that was really consistent with what Al suggested back at our meeting, and he was the, you know, the DPW person back then. Kevin and I had a conversation out in the hallway. He's uncomfortable with that being a carte blanche. He's nervous that bringing Building 1 and Building 2 online without the pipe being fixed, he wants confirmation from Weston and Sampson, as you recall, they were the ones that did the study, that that is not gonna have an adverse impact on the pipe, and there won't be a surge at that point. So, I could argue tonight that, you know, I don't believe that's the case and all that stuff. But what, in reality is, is Kevin's committed to give them a call tomorrow. We can have, maybe Kevin and I will have agreed to make a, get a call together tomorrow afternoon between us to see where we stand on that. So, assuming that Weston and Sampson doesn't have a problem with this pipe, we would like to, you know, be able to bring those two buildings online with occupancy. If for some reason they say, "No, you can't do it, the pipe will overflow into the river and it'll be, you know, catastrophic," we still need the water meters put in so that we can energize everything, get everything signed off. I get it that, so my attitude is just put the water meter in, get us to hook it up, and then shut the water off on us. You know, turn it on and shut it off. I mean, we're not gonna have anybody living in these buildings. So, even if the water's turned on, there's no one's going to be in there to use the toilets, to use the showers, to use the sinks. So, I don't understand, in my opinion, I don't understand the risk. The risk comes once we allow occupancy of the buildings, and now you've got people using them, so I can understand that. But I, I just don't understand why we can't put these pieces of equipment in place. They won't be utilized in relatively, I mean, such a minor manner for testing and whatever. It's really insignificant amount of water we put into the system before we have it occupied, so. So, that's my little presentation for the evening.
Steve, can you clarify one thing? So, you said it costs $68,000 to do this project?
For, yes, for the pipe, for the, to replace that 60 feet of pipe is $68,000, not including engineering, legal, and permits, to purchase the permits, to file the permit fees, so.
And you said you're gonna take care of the permits and the legal and all that?
Yeah, I think that it's fair, Tony, to, to assume that maybe the, so I'm thinking, like, you guys were at 50%. So, I'm thinking if we did a quarter of this and then added another 10,000 bucks for the permitting, which I presume it's gonna be roughly, you know, for engineering, legal, and then the permit fees alone are probably 10,000 bucks.
So, we're, we're here because you want it to be 25% instead of 50%, so like $10,000 is what we're?
No, 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 no. So, when we left last time, I think Ms. Karen had suggested 50%, but we never really had an agreement or anything, so. Yeah, no.
So, if we agree, so you think you should pay 25% and the town should spend 75%?
Yes.
Of $68,000?
Correct. And we would do that as a credit towards the $270,000 in sewer hookup fees that we're paying for the project. So, we're, we're paying 2.
240. There's some credits for the existing.
Oh, okay. $240,000, which we discussed last time as kind of a way to offset that cost.
So, $50,000 is what we're kind of debating here?
Well, yes and no. I mean, if the town, we would, yeah, but.
So, if you paid everything, you're willing, you're willing to pay 25%?
Yep.
And if we said, "No, you have to pay everything," then there'll be an extra $50,000, is what the math is?
Yes, plus the permitting fees.
Right.
We're willing to take on permitting, engineering, legal, and permits.
Right.
And construction of it?
Yeah. Oh, and by the way, yes, of course, we would manage the construction unless you guys wanna do that. He didn't wanna do it.
I don't know.
I convinced him that that was not an option, that we had to manage the construction.
Right, Kevin?
Kevin, that's what you prefer, right?
Yeah, Kevin assumed we would manage the construction.
And we'll be overseeing it also, we'll have representatives.
Yeah, I would imagine these, you wouldn't know how to manage it more than we would be able to.
Well, hopefully the firm, the firm that you're doing can have a good work plan and can do the work without any issues.
Right, and be able to rely on you for guidance and how anything comes up. Okay.
Can not relinquish any of this?
Of what?
The 240.
Well, they're just gonna deduct it from the 240.
Yeah, I just thought that would be the easiest way to deal with it, so it wasn't like we're looking for a check from the town. We're just gonna use it as a credit towards the 240.
So, what did the other boards think? Did you go before planning or any, there?
No, this, yeah, there was no.
Kevin, what did you, what's your take on this?
My, my only concern is I don't wanna assume it's all overflowing and going into the river. That's, that's my big concern with the project itself and in the original put-off. That's, that's why we put down the conditions that they had to hire an engineering firm to prove that it wouldn't cause a surcharge, and the engineering study came back and said it could potentially cause a surcharge.
Right, so we're, we're past that, we're gonna put a pipe in.
Right.
So, what, what, you have, you think this is gonna solve the problem?
For this building, yes.
So, what is your take on the cost?
The $68,000?
Yeah, did you have an opinion on that, or is this really up to?
I just heard it two minutes before I came into the, inside of the building.
And you don't have a problem with them doing the work, managing the project?
Caliaco, I believe, is a big firm, and they have a decent reputation as far as I know, but I didn't research them or anything to that effect.
So, if we work out the dollar amounts, then you think this is the solution to the problem?
Yes.
And you're fine with that?
My only concern is, I'm not comfortable, you know, turning the water on to any of the buildings or having them active for the sewer until we know for sure or we get some backup that it isn't gonna cause an overflow in the manhole right next to the river.
But if they're not using it.
Can we hold the OCs?
Yeah, sorry, I was gonna say, if they're not using it, it wouldn't happen, Kevin, right? Because you don't have the C, the OCs.
Correct, if they're not using it, it wouldn't happen, but one of the things that they requested is that two of the buildings go online and get occupancy permits, and they hold back the third building prior to.
But you're gonna get that worked out tomorrow, hopefully, right, with Weston and Sampson?
Yeah, that was our understanding from what we had been told from the, you know, the previous town administrator. You know, the two buildings would come online, the third one would wait. My understanding is the Weston and Sampson report talks about this project and its impact, and it says it could surcharge. So, the idea is, is well, the project won't be in total until we get that third building, and that's the leverage that the town would hold over our heads until we get the pipe done.
Well, Kevin's, I mean, his, that's his concern. He doesn't.
No, no, no question about it.
So, it all makes perfect sense to me. If we can, whether we think we should pay zero or whether we think we should pay 50, well, that's what we'll have to decide tonight, and then.
Sure.
Seems like it's a solution.
Well, that, that, plus we're asking for some directive with respect to being able to install the water meters. If we can put the water meters in, and we can, you know, if that's, at a minimum, we need the water meters installed so we can finish building the buildings and getting the sign-offs and inspections.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problems with the water meters going in.
Did pay for the water meters?
Yeah, just like, yeah, anybody, yeah, no question, and the hookup fees and the whole thing.
You pay the fees in full for the water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then connect that up and activate it, and you could lower the, lower the gates afterwards so it wasn't full flow out of those buildings.
Yeah, we'd never expect to do it until we paid.
That makes sense to me.
And again, Steve, why do you want, I mean, that's, why do you want water meters?
Well, 'cause, again, above my pay grade, Mr. Harris, but apparently you cannot ground the electrical system unless you ground it to the meter. I suggested, "Well, why can't you just ground it to a pipe?" Apparently, that's not an option.
Okay.
People smarter than me know that's not the case, so.
So, give me a 90-second argument on why we should pay anything for this.
Okay, so, not to rehash what happened last time, but the process, the permit this project went through a 14-month period. There was, we, as Mr. Danahue pointed out, as we went through the permitting, the special permit from the planning board, there was a discrepancy or difference between the, all of the permits and the water system permit, if you recall. There was never any mention of the applicant or the owner of the property having to do any public infrastructure during the permitting process. 14 months, umpteen different plans circulated through every department in town, and then the permit, the process get, the project gets permitted. Mr. Genta's company buys the project as permitted, and then he gets hit with this sort of surprise. What are you talking about? Conversations, Mr. Morse isn't here this evening, but if you recall from December, Mr. Morse related conversations he had with Al Bangert at the time about the, the sewer tie-in fees of $240,000. We were led to believe that that was what this was for, you know, for public infrastructure improvements to handle a project like this. Essentially, that's really the bottom line. The 90-second argument is, is that the 240 was, is really there to improve the public systems that are in place to handle this type of project. If we want this kind of development in this area, which we do want, that's why the overlay district was put in place in the first place, then that's what these fees have to be spent, that's what they have to be used for, is to improve the infrastructure in that area, so.
But then, anybody could build a project that needed work above and beyond what the project is and say, "Well, just take my hookups and, and make it work."
So, so.
So, I understand the point that this money comes in and it's supposed to fix the entire infrastructure, but it's not also supposed to create an infrastructure problem?
No, 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 of course not.
In the process, and that's where there's a little disconnect of.
Well, the, so the, I guess I would argue that the Weston Sampson report doesn't say there is a problem. It says there could be a problem. It doesn't define it as a problem that is going to happen. It said it's possible that the pipe wouldn't sufficiently handle the flow that's gonna come from this project. So, I guess the way I look at this is like, if we were permitting a supermarket in the town, that we were permitting a supermarket, get all permitted, we had the pre-construction meeting, started construction, got everything going, or at least got that far ahead, and all of a sudden the town said, "Hey, you know what? You gotta put a signalized intersection in." Whoa, 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 back the truck up. This, this stuff, that needs to be done during the permitting process. That needs to be disclosed to the permit holder. We didn't, I mean, not that this is, would ever happen, but the, the owner of the property and the permit person never had the opportunity to appeal that decision. It wasn't part of the process, it wasn't part of the special permit for this project. We fully expected to apply for all necessary permits, but we never expected to apply for a permit that was going to add additional public improvements to the project, so it really boils down to that. It's, it's.
But if they had said that?
We would, we would have.
And if you had appealed it, and they said, "No, still, engineering says it could," then you'd have to pay it.
Sure, and that would be factored into the price of the project, the cost of the project.
If I had known upfront, I would have paid as much for the land problem.
Right. So, it was permitted in a way that didn't require this, and then it came in later. And we're, look at, pointing the finger at, I said this to both Kevin and Peter this morning, pointing the finger doesn't do us any good. Trying to assess blame doesn't do us any good. What we need to do is to think about and work out how to fix the problem and move forward, because this is an important project, and we're here to partner with you. We're, we understand that maybe it wasn't exactly the way it came to us as far as the, this particular issue. And we understand that the town may not have, it may not have come to the town in exactly the proper way. So, we're here to resolve it in a way that benefits everyone, and we wanna, we wanna contribute to the public.
And I'll be quiet after this, because I know everyone else is gonna, but our job is to decide whether the taxpayers should bear that expense. And I agree with you, sir, that you may not have paid what you paid for the property had you known that, but is that the taxpayer's problem to, to resolve that? And, and I, I understand your point that if it was in the permit, then you would have known, and it would have, it would have been, it was probably a mishap there, but, so it's not, it's great.
My only comment would be, it wasn't a known, and we didn't know it. It wasn't there, and we didn't realize it. It wasn't there. This was not a condition of our permit. So, you know, we didn't have an opportunity to discuss this in any way until after it was over and the project was permitted, so. Anyway, but I certainly understand that the taxpayers, are we asking the taxpayers to contribute to the improvement of public infrastructure? Yeah, we are. Are we seeing this project as a benefit to the town and the tax revenue that it's gonna bring in as well? Yeah, we are. Is it gonna bring in over $200,000 in sewer hookup fees? It is. Is it gonna bring in, how many, how much is the water fees? Thousands of dollars in water hookup fees? It is. So, it's, it, if you look at that 50,000 in a vacuum as a burden on the taxpayers, that's unfair. Because the 50,000, if you look at it in the context of the whole project, is a contribution that will benefit the town as well.
Karen?
I have a couple of questions about just sequencing for Kevin, but before that, I would, I would submit that I'm sure that our town planner, with the 90-second pitch, would have a different view of the interpretation of where we got here. But I also wanna point out, in the Sampson, Weston and Sampson report, it is, it's very clear, it says, "This line should be replaced." It's not a, it might be a problem, it's a definite. This has to be replaced for this project to be fully operational. So, my question, I guess, to Kevin is on the sequencing, how comfortable are we to do, to bring one or two buildings online before the, because that doesn't delineate in the report, what the, before the 12-month is done. They could be done on parallel, and I'm okay with that, but are we, look, should we maybe only be looking at bringing one building online while this work's being done?
And that's what I talked to Steve about. I'm uncomfortable putting any buildings online until I have somebody else take a look at it and say, "We determined that we, we could, you could put one building online, you could put two buildings online." Weston Sampson did the study. I would request that they review it and get back to us if they feel one building. Because I, I really don't wanna see a potential manhole overflow right, right there.
But they're not putting any buildings online?
Until they know that if, what the sequen, like, it might be, they say, "You can put one on, it's not gonna be a problem" while you build the 12. How do you do that anyway? Do you have to bypass it? And then, Steve, you mentioned, I think, did you, did I hear you correctly that this particular, before Concom anyway?
It's, it's work going to be done in a resource area or a, I don't think it's in the area, but it's in a buffer zone.
But it's near the, right.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, look, Greg hasn't analyzed it from an engineering standpoint to plot it on the ground, but I mean, it's right next to the river, so I can't imagine it's not.
So, you could be four months out before you can start, just on the outside.
Yeah, it's possible that we could be, I actually threw the number up, six months to Kevin, and then I, as I thought about it, I backed it off because we're not dealing with, we're not dealing with zoning and Concom, we're just dealing with Concom. But nonetheless, it, yeah, it could be four months.
Which is why we talked about relief for the first two buildings, so we can bring some.
Right, which is why if Weston and Sampson.
Paying customers online to help finance everything.
So, if you got the water meters soon and could continue finishing your punchless in construction?
Yes.
How long is that, in, putting the sewer aside? How long before you would be to substantial completion pri, without sewer? For one building?
Yeah, June 1st for the first building and, and July 1st for the second.
That's, that's a sequencing problem, because if it's gonna take four months to get a 12, it depends, I think it comes down to what they say. You know, if they say, "Gosh, you can't even put one on," then we have a problem.
If I may, Ms. Canfield, the, where you were reading from, the requirement, is that the letter from?
This is the memo from December 2016, and the summary. Did I read it right?
Yeah, this is from, this is from Kevin Cafferty to, to Peter.
Oh, yes, sorry, I saw the.
I don't believe that's, I just wanna make sure I didn't misquote anything. I would never wanna mislead the board, but that's the memo from Kevin. I would never want to mislead the board, but that's the memo from Kevin requesting, or requiring that the.
No, it's, it's addressed to Kevin from Sampson.
Okay.
From, from Weston Sampson.
Okay. Because I don't, I don't think I have a copy of it.
We can have mine.
We have.
Yeah, we can give it to him in December. It was in the backup package, so I assume that.
Is it in the package that I sent it?
You're welcome to have mine.
Thanks. Kevin and I were talking about it outside, and we didn't have that memory either.
I believe that, that came with the package afterwards, or what? No, when we originally submitted that, that was attached to the back of it.
Okay.
It was in the summary on the last page.
That was on the back of that memo.
Okay.
I mean, I, I agree with John that, you know, yeah, this has been a long process for you, and we're trying to work with you, and, you know, make sure that everything, nothing harms, the money aside, that the, getting the water hooked up so that you could continue with your, you know, timeline is, is not a bad idea. But we've got to resolve this, and we've got to resolve the, the financing of it.
Okay, so it's just temporarily surgeyed online, okay. Okay.
So.
But again, that contemplates full occupancy of the project.
Right, to the, to the point of, can you put one on without it being a problem? We need to know that.
Sure. Okay. But, again, in the meantime, we can still get the meters, and as Kevin said, they can.
Well, that's, I don't have.
Give us the water and let us finish the sign-offs, and we just can't get occupancy permits. We have no intention of putting people in there without occupancy permits.
Right. All right, so the, the issue is the money, right? The cost.
I think we all, I mean, does anyone disagree with the fact that we can give them the water meters and put, you know, whatever.
Energize it, get you all set up for the water.
So, you keep going.
Wait for Weston and Sampson and let them say what, what the current pipe system can handle.
Correct.
They say one building, then, if they say zero, then zero, or if they say, whatever they say.
Understood.
Can I say something, please?
Sure.
I think it was during the planning board cover hearings, I mean, while sewer was never really brought up, it was expected that the sewer would be connected just like any other project, and it was a requirement that they had to meet all the conditions for the sewer. That, that was, that was the expectation. That's why there was the condition in there. You have to get all available permits from, you know, DPW, Board of Health, Fire. We say that in all of our, of all of our permits. I mean, there are other items on the project that still need to be completed prior to occupancy from the planning board point of view too. So, that's, from the way I see it, that's a lot of work to do in a month out there to anticipate occupancy for some units as of June 1st. There's still a lot of site work to be done.
We know.
Well, that's, maybe there's.
I mean, they're, we're not saying that we're going to give them an occupancy permit. That's the, the expectation, right.
I'm just letting you know that there's still a lot to be done as well, you know, to get.
Maybe aggressive timeline.
To get occupancy, and that if the planning board assumes that they will get everything they needed to get a sewer permit, and everything would have to be done when they permitted the project.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think in the last meeting, we, we went through all that, and what I recall is that the, the cost of, we were talking more about the negotiation of this $68,000, whatever that cost was going to be. Not that it was going to be.
We thought it was more than that, actually.
Yeah. And I, and I didn't understand that it was going to be, you know, billed against the 240, if you will. That, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
To me, it was an additional cost that we were here to, we had said 50% of that $70,000, not 25. I mean, that's what we had suggested.
I don't, I don't think I follow. So, the, this, the 68's on top of the 240.
We get the 240 no matter what.
Right.
Yeah.
It's whether we.
We reduce that by a contribution to the 68. So, we'd own, we'd own the 240, then we'd own the 68, plus the permitting, you know, so that, that's, okay.
Okay.
I was only using the 240 as a mechanism to deal with the.
Yeah, when you said that it would go against the 240, I was concerned that you were considering subtracting that from there, so.
No, no. If you, if you agreed to a $50,000, if you agreed to a $50,000 concession tonight, we could just do it by restructuring the 240 to 190, I guess, that's.
No, but that's my point, is that, that's.
Well, it's either that or we write, they write us a check for 240, and we write them a check for 50.
Right.
It's just math.
Yeah.
Oh, 50% of the $70,000.
Yeah. Or we do zero, and they write 240, and then there's no money exchanged.
Correct.
Now, we're just, we actually have to decide whether we want to contribute to this extended expense to hook up to the, to hook up to the new thing. It's going to be $68,000 plus permitting.
And keep in mind that because it's not a public project, we don't have to adhere to the prevailing wage, so that's probably a 30% savings right off the bat for the town that they had to do it themselves.
Which is why we asked you to.
Yeah, I think we talked about that last time, and it's a, it's.
It is a cost savings to everyone.
Yeah, so it, it helps you, it helps us, and we get the job done.
I'm sorry, Kevin, can you remind me, if, when the 12-inch pipe is attached, it will create enough capacity for this development, and there'll be surplus or no surplus, so.
And I believe there's surplus with the 12-inch pipe.
Well, it should be double the size, maybe, if I'm going from eight to 12.
Right, but for the system.
I mean, we talked about this last time.
I know, I'm sorry, I just, it was.
No, no, I meant, I didn't, I didn't mean, I didn't mean it like that. I was just reiterating.
Can I ask the same question?
No, no.
Yes.
No, what, my point was not to remind you that we may have discussed this last time.
That's okay, happens every day.
That was not my point. My point was to suggest that, you know, 12, 14, we shouldn't be putting a pipe in that's not going to serve the neighborhood, you know? Put a pipe in that's going to serve the neighborhood. If we're going to do this, let's do it once and call it quits.
Agreed.
But you're confident that the 12 will be fine? Because we're talking about material costs at that point. We've got to dig the hole.
I agree. That's why I asked.
No, no, my understanding was, the pipe was at 90% capacity, and we were going to take it to like 92.
Yeah.
93, and then doubling the size of the pipe would take it up to 200 or something. So, it should be able to double the size of the people using it.
So, it is a benefit to the.
I think Weston and Sampson said 12, right?
That's just, that's on that section. I believe they said to you, 12. That's on that section.
Yeah.
We have a lot of other pipe in that area that, that's getting closer to capacity. That's just one section of pipe, 60-foot. When we reviewed it, we asked the developer and the developer's engineer to do a study and prove that we would not have a surcharge or any issues there. And their results came back showing that we would have a surcharge. So, when that came back at that one section, that's when we requested that the pipe be fixed, so that there won't be a surcharge from that project.
Okay.
So, that's why it took a little while. It needed the study first, and that was part of the.
So, what we're doing here will, and forgive me if I wasn't paying attention, what we're asking them, or we're going to partner with them to do, will be sufficient for any future development.
For that section of that 60-foot pipe.
Well, no, I don't know what direction, but next door to this project, there's, you know, let's talk about that being developed. Will we be back at the same situation, digging up the road again?
We're not going to be digging up that section of pipe and putting that, placing that pipe with a 16. 12 would have capacity, is my understanding for that.
They're paying, somebody's.
Future development.
And that's not their.
That's not their problem. That's not to say, you know, before that's done, we would ask, you know, same as we ask for this development here, to do a review and make sure that there's not going to be any surcharge.
But what would you say, what?
On anything that's adding significant flow, not a minor flow for a one-house or two-house, but on a larger capacity building like this, we want a flow study before we get to make sure we're not going to break rocks down.
No, I can't imagine it is. So, what, I think, but, I just mentioned this to Peter. You know, if they decide before we get the whole, you know, done over, and that they need a 16, just tell us, we'll put the 16 in.
Right.
You know, I want to make sure, I want the pipe to be big enough.
Well, you're going to have to do it to the specifications.
Right, so it may be more than 68.
Our understanding was a 12 was going to take care of it.
Right.
Let's check with them tomorrow and find out. Because I want to, I want this pipe to work for future development.
Yes, because they said last time an eight was enough, right?
Well, I don't remember.
Right. I, I, let's, so we've kind of beat this up, so.
It's insignificant cost difference, is what I'm saying. We'll pick up the tab for a bigger pipe if that's what they, they decide.
So, I would suggest that we, we hook them up with the water meters and let them get their electricity, and, and not give them an occupancy permit and put anyone in there until you get everything cleared up. And there's some vagueness in terms of the way that the process went through. I would suggest splitting it with them 50/50. So, they'll pay, we'll take $32,000 off of, $34,000 off of the 240, and they'll pay for the full expense of the $68,000 to fix the pipe and do the permitting. And, and the town, you know, take some of the money they're paying and, and put it in the infrastructure there.
Could I just ask, if, if we were going to do the 68, can we add the permitting and engineering costs, and then split that, the 70? If you're going to do 50/50, because that's the true cost, Mr. Vignani. It's not just the 68.
How much are we talking, Steve?
I'm thinking.
Another five for us. He's talking 10 for the permitting, and so another five.
You think it's going to be 10?
Thirty-nine.
It'll be five to you guys. Yeah, I think engineer, because it's engineering and the permitting cost, the, the NOI filings are probably 1,500 bucks alone, you know, for the filing fees, the publications, and everything else.
Thirty-four to thirty-nine.
Yeah.
And I've only done this a few times, but the 68 might not stay at 68.
We're not, we're not going to ever discuss this again.
I'm just saying. In my experience with contractors.
So, what are you saying? Have we taken the overage?
Well, you do, you just say 50% of the total cost.
Can we just say 50% of whatever turns out to be?
No, they're going to need a number tonight. They're going to need a number tonight.
And Caliaco got a design, they got plans. They know.
No, no, they did. They got it all. Yep.
So, to Peter's point, this number should be pretty firm.
I would hope, I would hope, Sean, I, I don't have any reason to believe that it wouldn't be.
So, I'll suggest that we go to 50% of all, so $39,000. And, and that's it. If it's over, you guys got to deal with it. And if it's under, you guys get to deal with that too. And that would be 50% of the project if the permitting is about 10 grand and the other thing. And, and again, the payment, we wouldn't pay any money out. We would just get, take, take the credit off of the, of the fees. And it does benefit the town because we are getting improved infrastructure for that area, and it's at a rate that's cheaper for the, the contractor as well. So, that's what I, I propose.
What about the connection of buildings one and two? Do you want to make that dependent upon the Weston and Sampson?
Yes, exactly. Whatever Weston and Sampson says, if it's, if they say zero, it's zero. If they say two, it's two.
Okay.
Right, it has to be.
Okay.
Say that again?
No, I was just making sure he was okay with.
Yeah.
With that.
Well, we, Kevin, is, is there anything else you think we should include?
No, I just didn't want the town to have the liability if we allow a building to connect, and all of a sudden it's overflowing there.
So, how do we mitigate that?
By.
Let's put the pipe in.
Yeah. So, and you'll get the pipe in as soon as possible.
Yes.
I think, you know, someone said that June 1st is probably an aggressive date anyway, so maybe we have a little bit of leeway there.
We're not going to be able to do June 1st just because of the, the conservation permitting. It's not going to get there. I mean, if it does, it'll be a miracle, but, I mean, it's.
All right, any, any, Tony sort of has a motion on the table. Can I ask one more question before we move on? Yeah. How long will it take them to do sort of the breakout of, of sequencing, do you think?
Was that to me, or to?
That was to Kevin, so.
To Weston and Sampson.
Yeah, so, how long do you think it would take them to break out the sequencing if, you know, they came back and said, gosh, you know, with the current piping, you could do one building, or? How long does that typically take to summarize?
Well, I'm hoping to call the engineer that did the original study and say how much water drops on it. Give me something in writing. You know, he might charge me a couple hundred bucks to review it again, and.
We'll split that, too.
And that, that way, it's, it's on, it's on that, the permitting process, it's passed on to them.
Well, yeah. Then if you can sequence on faster, then that helps. Okay, sorry, thank you.
You can help us speed up the conservation commission process.
They are entirely on their own body. All right.
Was that a motion, Tony?
Well, we can make an official motion, but is there any further discussion? John, did you have anything else?
No.
With this? Sean, do you have anything else?
No.
Karen?
So, I got to repeat that, I guess?
Yeah.
So, move to revise the sewer connection requirements outlined in the DPW, by the DPW in the December 15, 2016 memo from the Town of Situate as follows. Allow the applicant to get water meters in place with, with any water, without any water accessibility until Weston and Sampson indicates to us how much water flow the current pipe can handle, as well as reducing the fee on the hookup fees from, by $39,000, and requiring that the contractor pay for the full installation of, and permitting of the, of the project. That's, that.
Cover it?
You want to cover it? You're looking at me kind of.
Just thought, I was talking to Kevin at Sampson, just trying to make sure we get everything.
Make sure the electrical.
Yeah, we're going to install, reduce the permit fee by $39,000, and he will get, he will get occupancy of potentially one or two buildings depending upon.
The Weston.
Weston and Sampson's review of the sewer flow. Is that everything?
Well, he won't, we won't, we have nothing to do with the occupancy permit. He'll get, he'll get water flowage based on the.
He would get sewer privileges depending on.
On the Weston and Sampson.
Depending on that.
I think we want to make that, that clear, so there's no.
Did you get that, Lorraine?
Yeah, I'm just listening to this discussion and modifying that.
I think I said that.
Do you want to read it back? We'll have Lorraine read it back.
You did mention water flow as opposed, I was going to.
Use sewer.
Occupancy permits, but I think water flow probably makes more sense. We get the water flow. Because we need water to get occupancy permit. They don't have a pool of occupancy permits.
Move to revise the sewer connection requirements outlined by the DPW in December 15, 2016 memo to the Town of Situate as follows. Allow the applicant to put water meter flow in place and reduce the hookup fee by $39,000, and the contractor will pay the full permitting for the project.
So, the piece that's missing is that water flow will be contingent upon the Weston and Sampson report.
It has to be permitting and installation.
And installation.
The sewer, that's for the sewer, for the sewer line up. For the sewer hookup. In the, in the water fee also would be paid at the time. You'd, you'd pay the water fee for the building.
That, that has to happen.
Yeah.
You don't give out meters, you don't really give them out without being paid anyway, right? Normally.
I know, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I know.
You want to read the second part again?
Want to read the second part again? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to read the second part. Allow the applicant to put water meter flow in place and reduce the hookup fee by $39,000, and the contractor will pay for the permitting and installation for the sewer and water connection project.
Right. And then the, the water flow will be dictated based on the report of Weston and Sampson.
Sewer flow.
Sewer flow, sorry.
Sewer flow would be sewer flow for occupancy for the buildings would be dictated by, um-
Weston and Sampson.
Hi, Weston and Sampson, in meeting all other requirements of the-
Planning board.
Planning board and other committees.
But that's for the occupancy.
Yeah.
I'll put all other requirements to the special permit, I guess, that's what you want, yeah, right?
As a special permit.
Yeah, all other requirements to the special permit.
Okay, so the last section says sewer flow for occupancy will be dictated by Weston and Sampson in meeting all other requirements for the special permit.
Of the special permit, yeah.
Of the special permit.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed?
Put me on the aye.
I'm sorry?
Put me on the aye. I didn't say aye, but aye.
Yep.
Delayed aye.
Delayed aye.
I'll take it. Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, all righty. Next is-
Who?
Mr. Dennehy.
Me?
Yes.
What am I on?
Reading the Arbor Day proclamation. Oh, proclamation.
Ooh.
So this is-
Reading Arbor Day?
Something that I, I think I've done a long time. Seems like the fifth time I've done it. I think when I was not clerk, I ended up having to read it. Because clerk wasn't here and I forgot who that was. Maybe it was you, Madam Chairman.
Can you read it?
So we have an Arbor Day proclamation. And what this is, is it says that whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce the emission, or rather the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas the trees are a renewable source giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our day increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of, a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the Town of Situate has recognized, has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Situate, do hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed this twenty-fourth day of April, uh, two thousand and eighteen by the Board of Selectmen from the Town of Situate.
Aye, aye. Great. Thank you.
How come we're Tree City USA? Shouldn't we be Tree Town USA?
Yeah, Tree, Tree Town.
And how many trees are we planting? That's the other thing I wanna know.
Well, I think you raised that last meeting.
I keep saying this because I don't see a lot of trees getting planted. We gotta talk to-
No. That's a tea.
Where's Kevin? Get him back in here.
No, it's all right.
Not too long ago, they used to give out little plugs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I go back to this, we should have like a plant for planting trees and being like-
No, I think that's, I mean, it's gonna be Tree City USA. We may as well, especially with all the trees that we lost this past storm. All right, so next on the agenda is, um, we've already done the election poll hours and so it's to discuss and vote one-day beer and wine licenses. We have a couple from the Silent Chef for an activity at Situate Maritime Center on June sixteenth. One from Taylor Made Bartenders for St. Mary's on April twenty-ninth, which is coming up. And then also another for Taylor Made Bartenders for Maritime Center on the twelfth. And everything was in our backup.
And then, I'm sorry, we had one added for Lavishly Done.
Oh, the Lavishly Done was added as well.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to the following: Silent Chef for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on June sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen from five-thirty PM until nine-thirty PM. Taylor Made Bartenders for an event at St. Mary's Parish Hall on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen from one PM until four PM. Taylor Made Bartenders for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on May twelfth, two thousand and eighteen from twelve PM until four PM. And Lavishly Done for an event at Lucky Finn on May fourth, two thousand and eighteen from six-thirty PM until nine-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all sit.
Hocker Peddlers?
Then we have seasonal license renewals.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen approve Hocker Peddler's license to Nona's Homemade Inc. for the two thousand and eighteen season.
Second. Move by Mr. Dennehy, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And the next thing is the policy. Lorraine had given us, um, a redline version in our backup to change a couple of things. I think Lorraine just, basically the biggest one was, um, just correcting, updating different websites, addresses. Really weren't any huge changes here that I saw that really changed anything, yeah. So it's just really cleaning up some of the different things. I don't know if you, if anybody had any concerns. No, thank you for doing that. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept-
Move to approve the revision of the Hocker Peddler's, um, Hocker Peddler Operational Policy fifty-three dash one-eight.
I'll second that.
Move by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thanks to Lorraine for doing that. And then we move on to correspondence.
Yeah, it looks like we have a letter here from Mr. James T. Hart to the Board of Selectmen. Um, subject, countryway sidewalk and walkway. On behalf of the people who either live on or off countryway between Huey Road and Union Street in the Green Bush section, I am submitting this petition requesting the completion of Phase Two Sidewalk Walkway Project. Countryways a busy and dangerous road to walk on and the people on the attached list all support the completion of the sidewalk walkway. There are ninety-seven signatures. Thank you for your consideration. I have to, um, at least make a correction here while he calls it a sidewalk. It's not. Uh, what was approved was a path and bike path and of course, other than that, I would agree with him. I think the bike path should be completed. And, um-
And I talked to Kevin, um, tonight. This is part of the complete streets grant process, so they're still putting in applications, so to-
Well, I think-
Do the design of it. And I think we just need to decide, I think our biggest concern last time was with the telephone poles and all that, but-
Well, I think then we should have that discussion at some point because it's already passed CPC. It's a question about whether or not we want to, um, build it. And I think right now you got a pathway that goes half the way and it stops. It is a treacherous section. People I see walking on it and, um, you know, I think it should link. It certainly for open space and certainly for recreation has that connection because it connects to Green Bush and then it connects to Drift Way and brings you around.
Let me just ask this. I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. Sidewalks are the best thing. Bike paths, whatever it is to get residents, people walking, jogging, biking off the road, it's much safer. Do we wanna, and I don't know which side of the road it's gonna go on, do we wanna just fast-track it and have more of the sidewalks like we have now? Or do you wanna maybe take longer and if it's, involves moving telephone poles and things like that?
I, you know, it's a, I think the, um, I've gotta go take a look at it. I'd like to take a look because I, you know, obviously after the first phase, the poles should have been moved. They should have figured that out, or they should have put it on the other side.
But, you know, it is, it is helping. So what do we wanna do? Just keep going like that or, or?
Well, here's a question. You know, I know there was a lot of people complaining about the telephone poles and Facebook loved to make fun of us in the town complaining about, gee, you got a pole here. But really, is it really that much of an impediment for people who use the bike path? I, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, um, I just, I'm curious. I'd love to have the, uh, sit down a coffee or tea with these people and, uh, meeting and say, hey, listen, do you realize if it goes on this, is this gonna be a real problem for you, these telephone poles? Because if they are, then we have to go back and figure it out. Or do you really care? I mean, is it, providing it's, it's consistent with the ADA or the Architectural Access Board and you have access, yeah, there are poles there. It may be, seem like a danger, but I'm like, nobody's complaining about it now. I mean, there are some cartoonists who like to make fun, but I mean, at the end of the day, that's them being stamed.
Right, yeah.
Jim, next time you have, next time you have your coffee with the crew and there are some residents here, run that by them.
Yeah.
You know, be a good-
It's crazy that we made that, that way. These, these telephone poles are in the middle of the sidewalk. Now, I, I agree that it helps for people walking.
Mm-hmm.
But if a little kid is on a bicycle, they could hit that pole and get hurt. So I, I agree that area needs to be finished, but we have to design it differently than, than we did the first section because it's- And I don't know what the impact's gonna be. I don't know where the telephone poles are for the rest of that street.
Right.
But I'm sure John will let you go right across his lawn if it's, there's a pole in the way, right?
Actually, the-
So let's do this. Let's, um-
But I think it just needs to be looked at. And it's gonna be too expensive to move fifty poles, I think. I think it's unrealistic to think that, you know, National Grid's gonna come out and move every pole. I mean, I don't know.
There's a lot of things you have to look at. What's the layout of the countryway there? How much is owned by the town? We might own more than we think in that section and therefore we could go on the inside.
Right, or it may not be a straight, it may not be a straight bike path. It may-
Right.
Like you said, if we have more land-
Right.
Curve into the inside. I know Norwell did that down on their, um, path on one-twenty-three.
There's no doubt that it needs to be connected.
Yeah.
So let's, um, Jim, if we can just- Elevate that within DPW to start taking a look at what we need to do to finish that.
Is it funded?
I don't think so, no. Because, no, it's not funded, no.
You sure?
Yeah, will be theoretically. No, that's why they're, they're asking for complete street grants, unless it's partially funded. I can't remember.
I thought we, we funded them both and we only did Phase One.
Well, let's check on that.
And we worked our way back. That's my recollection. I may be wrong.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I forgot too. All right.
Other correspondence?
Then there isn't some more, yep.
Well, we have a nice email from Linda Hayes, the Director of Situate Council on Aging, saying, um, wanted to make sure that people understand that on, um, April twenty-sixth, there's a community event, uh, a second evening of Irish music and song at the River Club for Senior Center. Council on Aging tickets are eight dollars per person, so let me back that up. So there's an event at the River Club, Irish music and song. They were actually gonna have it back in March, but unfortunately due to a storm that was postponed. It's, uh, you can get the tickets for eight dollars, um, at the Senior Center. Um, there's a full buffet dinner provided courtesy of the River Club, an Irish trio led by Rose Clancy, and it's from six to eight PM. There you go.
Great. Sounds like a good time.
What else we got here? Let's see.
We have a note from the Division of Marine Fisheries.
Oh, boy. Ah, all right. Guess what? Open to the taking of shellfish. So guess what? Effective Thursday, April fifth, two thousand and eighteen, um, it is, um, it's open, right?
Yep.
There you go.
Yep.
Go get your shellfish before it closes with red tide. Next. I think that's it.
Next, just accepted, acceptance of meeting minutes for the meeting.
Actually, I'm sorry, I think there's more correspondence that was included in your passing.
Oh, sorry.
High school graduate.
Your high school graduation?
National Grid.
The National Grid.
Well, the Situate High School graduation for the class of two thousand and eighteen is June first at six PM. And, um, National Grid, let's see what National Grid has to say. National Grid says to the Board of Selectmen, um-
Well, this is their, this is their yearly operational trimming.
There we go.
They're not gonna tell you, they're gonna cut the trees down.
Defoliate the trees. Be prepared so they have the lines, um, so they won't have any loss of electricity during storms. All right. And that's it.
That's it, right?
That is it, folks. There you go.
All right. Want to approve the minutes?
Move to accept the, uh, meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meetings held on April third and April ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second that.
Move by Mr. Vignani, second by Mr. Dennehy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, any updates? Does anybody have anything? Karen? I do, quickly. Um, I would like to officially resign as the South Shore Coalition liaison because I will be sworn in on Monday to represent Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And I can't do both because they're under the same umbrella. So, um, I will let you guys decide who would like to take up that post on behalf of the board. Um, and the other is, I just wanted you guys to know that the Water Resources Committee, who's been working really hard on conservation and different things, has been also working on an offset proposal, um, for new development. As we decline our resources with more people coming in, uh, a lot of communities will go out and require new developers to find ways to offset their potential use by, um, installing low-flow toilets or, you know, there's a lot of ways to do it. They've called that down and they're going to be going around to the various other boards to present their recommendations. So they'll go to planning and conservation and CPC and anyone else that might be affected before, and vet that before they come before us with some recommendations. I thought they did that already. They came with their, with their ideas, but now they wanna go to the other boards and see what, if there's something that they've not, they've not thought about in, in presenting a planning policy. Gotcha. So that's real progress after about a year of work. That's it. Sean, anything?
Nope.
Tony?
Um, no, no. I just wanna reiterate, I guess, yes. Um, just wanna reiterate Ship Shape Day is, um, coming up. It's Saturday. Um, come to Town Hall, pick up your bags and your picker-uppers and all that sort of stuff. It's a great day and we clean up the town. And then also just reiterate the high school sports going on. We've got a great baseball season starting, a great lacrosse season starting. Um, on Saturday, uh, both teams were playing on the fields and it was a great event. So get out there and support your teams.
So I went to Historical Committee, um, last Thursday and, um, they wanted to touch base and find out, you know, what's happening with Gates. Gates being the former high school, um, that's no longer Gates. And, um, wanted at least to be able to be participating in some capacity with, you know, some kind of like design. They asked whether or not there's a possibility about, you know, the original building, the use of, of looking at it as a possible design for the Senior Center. Um, I told them that certainly whatever happens, they wanna at least have a seat at the table with respect to, you know, what ultimately might get built there and that, you know, it would fit the, um, the, the site. Because it kind of demands a really nice imagery or, you know, for what they're looking at from architectural standpoint. So I told them I, I would share that with the board that, um, we would find, we're in the process of trying to look, identify architects. And I said, I think that makes perfect sense, but I'll bring it back to the board because I know a lot of committees, a lot of people are really interested in what's gonna be built there.
Well, I'll take it one step further. I think they should come in. Is it the society or commission you were with?
Commission.
Who, which, which one designates the building as being historical, the commission or the society?
Commission.
Commission?
And-
So I think they really do need to come in and talk to us publicly as to the validation of whether or not that building is indeed historical or not.
Sure.
Because I don't know that we have that determination, do we?
Um, they actually, I raised that subject with them and they said that they would be happy to come in-
Okay.
And talk about it.
All right, so let's, let's get them on the agenda sooner rather than later. All right, you got that? Okay.
So finally, the last thing is, you know, plastic bags. Today I was looking out my office and I just could see countryway and I said to myself, look at all this debris and everything. A lot of it was plastic bags. I, I think we as a board need to maybe take a stand and, and maybe even if it's kind of a, um, what's the word I want? A, um, a minor stand, but to say whether or not, what are we gonna do with plastic bags? Do we join in with the rest of some of these other communities and say we should ban it? Because frankly, it's one thing to have paper bags blowing around because they break down, but these things are just awful. And, and I actually think we should have that discussion at some point, you know? While we can, maybe we can't prevent CVS, and I'm using them as an example, or maybe some of the stores are from using plastic bags. I, I think we should use it as a policy, that we really want something that's gonna be biodegradable. I mean, we're the first town, town in this community, in this Commonwealth to go green completely, self-sufficient. I, I think, you know what? I think we should. I mean, these things are terrible. I mean, they're dangerous and as far as, you know, they're not biodegradable and, um, you know, we should take that stance, or at least I feel we should, at least braze it and discuss it. So I just-
I agree.
Say now, I'm like, I don't know. In the past, I'd be like, well, it seems silly and trite, but not really. I mean, these things are all over the place. They're, they don't break down.
No.
And I'm like, you know what? Um, maybe we should just say no.
Well, I had a, I was contacted by a resident with sort of the same concern, but with NIPS.
I think that's, that's interesting. I know-
Because they're a huge litter and issue as well as, you know, underage drinking issues. So-
I-
I think those are two big issues that we should probably take a look at.
So you wanna eliminate NIPS, so?
Just, I don't know if we, we even have the jurisdiction to do that. I do not know the answer to that. Or do you put a tax on them so people can redeem them, like recyclable tax, so they don't throw them off the side of the roads? And that's, if you do Ship Shape Day, it's three-quarters of your bags are filled with NIPS that are tossed out of the window. So, anywho. Resident brought it to my attention and I think it's a valid concern.
So we know where to find you this weekend.
Yeah.
Countryway, picking up those bags.
And not only that, but I'm gonna, it's funny you raised it because I wasn't even gonna talk about it. There are an unbelievable amount of NIPS on the countryway side because you can tell. Somebody gets in their car and right about when they hit where my office is, shh, out the window it goes. It's unbelievable. But, you know, but the point is, my push is on the bags right now. I just, I should have figured-
Two good, two good items. And I just lastly would like to thank everybody that showed up at town meeting. This is our first board meeting since town meeting. We had a great showing. First night, eight hundred twenty-plus people there. Second night, probably a little less, but still nonetheless, pretty decent showing. So keep it up, keep coming to our town meetings because it was good, healthy debate. And I just wanna thank you for, for attending.
Was that other business we kind of blended into?
Yes.
Yes. Um, do you have other business, Sean?
Well, yes, I thought it was committees and updates.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we blended it all.
No, but that's all right. You're just kinda locked in at a one. You have something, I wanna thank you for, I, maybe I called the meeting and then Mara had to chair it. Uh, but with the Air Force.
Oh, yes.
Jim, Kevin, Mike Stewart, at least eight or nine engineers, colonels, who else am I missing? From the Air Force.
Just one Colonel.
Oh, there was? Well, I was impressed. Anyway.
There's a lot of, yeah. There's a lot of brass there.
So anyway, I asked, this meeting happened and Paul Mara's like, what are we, who's chairman? And I said, oh, you are, you're the chairman. So she, you did a fantastic job. But, uh, I'll let you say what, you know, what happened. Had to do with Fort Cliff, okay?
Was it at Fort Cliff, at Fort Cliff? Is that where you met or?
No.
They wanna give us Fort Cliff, so. No, I'm just kidding. No, but, so it's Nancy Durfee was kinda had a, had a presentation and she was not trying to convince them, but trying to tell them, look, some, you know, a lot had eroded over the March storm. She had photographs before and after. And she said she can further document at some point out on the ocean side that some of that material gets to-